82, I haven't any cards on 82, no. What do we just have cards on? 32, the one, okay. No public comment, huh?
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here. Welcome to City Hall, to Council chambers and to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, October 19th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, LeBonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Weiss, signed Padilla, 10 members present in accord, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves and Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Grohl moves and Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on matters under general public comments. General public comment for today's meeting is closed. Ms. Perry?
Mr. President, thank you very much. Forgive me, I've got a cold. I wanted to recognize a group who is visiting here in our council chamber. The group is called Action for a Change. If they would please rise and be recognized. This group is an international group with visitors from all over the world and their focus is on world peace mediation and giving people strategies to live in a multicultural society. And they come as far away from Moldavia, Ukraine, United Kingdom, Vietnam, of course, the United States, Kenya, Argentina and Pakistan. I just wanted to say welcome and they're here today with Mr. Joe Turner, who is head of the Neighborhood Council Can Do and an activist on behalf of the Estelle Van Meter Center. Let's give them a big welcome.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. President, items known as for public hearings. Items 1 through 6, recommendation for council action would be to continue the hearings and ordinances to November 9th.
Members, items 1 through 6 now before us and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and without objection, continue to November 6th. Next item, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, that's...
Excuse me, November 9th.
Also, public hearing items, items 7 and 8 are street vacations in Council District 14 and if there are no protests, the City Council should instruct the city engineer to proceed with the vacation request.
Members, items 7 and 8 now before us. I do not have speaker cards on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Requests for specials, items 6, excuse me, 7 or 8, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 9 through 40, item 9 is confirmation of a city official. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold item 9 on the desk just for a minute here. We'll take it up as the first item called special.
And also to let council know on item number 27, if council does adopt that, there is an ordinance on the file and if council adopts the recommendations, the ordinance can be adopted on Friday on a continuation agenda.
Okay. Members, items 10 through 40 now before us. These items have had public hearings in committee. A motion would be required to reopen the public hearings. Do you have any requests for specials? Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call item number 26 special and for Councilmember Parks, item number 40.
26 and 40 called special.
22.
Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, item 16 and 19 special, please. Excuse me, 16 and 20.
16 and 20 called special. Mr. Garcetti?
24 and 26, Mr. Ace just did, 24, sorry.
24 called special by Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Grohl?
Thank you, 22.
22 called special by Ms. Grohl and I believe 30 and 31 as well. Those items should be considered concurrently.
Sorry, Mr. Padilla. We're gonna, 31 will be, we need to continue. Is there a timeline in which we continue that? Planning Department?
Hold it on the desk in the meantime.
Hold on the desk, but it'll be continued. Okay. It does not have a time limit, so we'll just continue it.
No time limit on 31.
Indefinitely until we come back. I mean, I don't have a specific date.
Want to send it back to committee?
I don't know. Let's hold it on the desk. I'll find out for sure. Thank you.
So, so far, we have called special items 16, 20, 22, 24, 26, 30, 31 and 40. Mr. Zine?
7.
We're almost there. Any other specials on items 10 through 40? Seeing none on the balance of the items.
If we can call it special.
Okay. Is that a verbal amendment or call it special? Let's call it special.
Oh, it's verbal. I can just give it right now.
Okay, let's do it now.
We just need to amend the HCD report to change recommendation 3 to adopt that rather than concur, adopt rather than concur on that recommendation.
Okay, we'll consider item 25 as amended. Any other specials on items 10 through 40? Seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 41 through 84, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Members, 41 through 84 now before us and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Specials, beginning with Mr. Zine. 47 called special by Mr. Zine. Same one. Okay. Any other specials? Seeing none. Let's open the roll and the balance of the items, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. I believe item 85 is a closed session item. We'll call that special. Next items.
On the continuation agenda, items 86 through 92 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Members, 86 through 92 now before us, unless there's an objection, seeing none.
86 to 92 special.
Let me first recognize that we don't have speaker cards on any of these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Mr. Zine, 86?
86 to 92.
Mr. Smith?
I have to go back to 82, 83, 84, go ahead.
Okay. Let's open the roll and the balance of the items. Oh, 86 to 92, okay. Okay, so those were called special by Mr. Zine. Mr. Smith, you want a reconsideration?
Asked reconsideration on 83 and 84.
Okay, let's open the roll and reconsideration, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, those are back before us.
Special please on behalf of Mr. Parks.
Madam Clerk?
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 9 and that's confirmation of Mr. Bernardo Silva to the Board of Zoo Commissioners.
Okay, Mr. Silva comes forward. Colleagues, we do have a committee report recommending confirmation of Mr. Silva. Members of the council wishing to speak or ask questions of our commission nominee. Okay, seeing none. Let's open the roll and confirmation, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service. Let's end that forthwith and before proceeding to the next item, let me recognize Councilmember Reyes for a presentation this morning. Mr. Reyes, you have the floor.
Don't be shy, don't be shy. Thank you, Council President.
Hold on, Mr. Reyes, before you begin. Colleagues, going to ask for your cooperation. It's getting a little loud in here. Council members, if you have to have a conversation, if you can, please take it to the rear of chambers. Sergeants, I'm going to ask for your help both behind the horseshoe as well as with the audience. Want to give our presenter all the attention he deserves. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for that courtesy. It gives me great pleasure to be here this morning with our honored guest, which includes our own Betty Wilson, Committee Director of Committee Affairs. Ms. Wilson has joined us with the Department of Disability. Members of the council, for those of you who may not know, October is National Disability Employment Awareness Month and this year is a particularly special year for a number of other reasons as well. 2005 marks the 15th anniversary of the Landmark Americans with Disabilities Act, an action that seeks to guarantee equal consideration and access to those with disabilities through many facilities, buildings and structures. This year also marks the 30th anniversary of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, an action that was truly modeled with the idea that no child or individual should be left behind. And 2005 also marks the 30th anniversary of one of the leading advocate groups of disability rights in this country. That organization, of course, is the Western Law Center for Disability Rights. The Western Law Center for Disability Rights was founded in the city of Los Angeles in July 1975 in memory of disability rights advocate A. Milton Miller and is the first cross-disability legal advocacy organization in the United States. The Law Center's mission is to promote the rights of people with disabilities and the public interest in awareness of those rights, thus protecting the possibilities for all. As I mentioned earlier, the Center is celebrating 30 years of effective litigation, mediation, education and leadership for the disability community in Los Angeles and in California. Since its establishment, the Western Law Center for Disability Rights has played a role in creating greater access to public services, businesses, employment and education opportunities for persons with disabilities. Indeed, one of its many noted programs is the Western Law Center for Disability Rights, Disability Mentoring Day, Los Angeles. This event is part of National Disability Mentoring Day and recognizes the importance of mentors and lives of successful people with disabilities. Disability Mentoring Day LA will bring 75 high school and college students with disabilities together with LA area business and government agencies for a day of job shadowing and learning from each other. In fact, one young woman, Teresa Mae De Vera, participated in Disability Mentoring Day LA a few years ago. She uses a wheelchair and was mentored by the Dean of Loyola Law School and by two public interest attorneys. Today, she's a graduate student at Loyola Marymount University and as some of you may recall, recently became one of our new...
Item six, excuse me, seven or eight. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items nine through forty. Item nine is confirmation of a city official. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold item nine on the desk just for a minute here. We'll take it up as the first item called special.
And also to let council know on item number twenty-seven, if council does adopt that, there is an ordinance on the file and if council adopts the recommendations, the ordinance can be adopted on Friday on a continuation agenda.
Okay. Members, items ten through forty now before us. These items have had public hearings in committee. A motion would be required to reopen the public hearings. Do you have any requests for specials? Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call item number twenty-six special and for Councilmember Parks, item number forty.
Twenty-six and forty called special.
Twenty-two.
Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, item sixteen and nineteen special, please. Excuse me, sixteen and twenty.
Sixteen and twenty called special. Mr. Garcetti.
Twenty-four and twenty-six, Mr. Reyes just did. Twenty-four, sorry.
Twenty-four called special by Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, twenty-two.
Twenty-two called special by Ms. Gruel and I believe thirty and thirty-one as well. Those items should be considered concurrently.
Sorry, Mr. Padilla. We're gonna, thirty-one will be, we need to continue. Is there a timeline in which we continue that? Planning Department?
Hold it on the desk in the meantime.
Hold it on the desk, but it'll be continued. Okay. It does not have a time limit, so we'll just continue it.
No time limit on thirty-one.
Indefinitely until we come back. I mean, I don't have a specific date.
Want us to send it back to committee?
I don't know. Let's hold it on the desk. I'll find out for sure. Thank you.
So, so far, we have called special item sixteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, thirty, thirty-one and forty. Mr. Zine.
Forty-seven.
We're almost there. Any other specials on items ten through forty? Seeing none on the balance of the items.
If we can call it special.
Okay. Is that a verbal amendment or call it special?
What is it?
Let's call it special.
Oh, it's verbal. I can just give it right now.
Okay, let's do it now.
We just need to amend the HCD report to change recommendation three to adopt the, that rather than concur, adopt rather than concur on that recommendation.
Okay, we'll consider item twenty-five as amended. Any other specials on items ten through forty? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items forty-one through eighty-four, ten votes are required for consideration.
Numbers forty-one through eighty-four now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Specials, beginning with Mr. Zine. Forty-seven called special by Mr. Zine. Same one. Okay. Any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. I believe item eighty-five is a closed session item. We'll call that special. Next items.
On the continuation agenda, items eighty-six through ninety-two are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Members eighty-six through ninety-two now before us, unless there's an objection, seeing none.
Eighty-six to ninety-two, special.
Let me first recognize that we don't have speaker cards on any of these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Mr. Zine, eighty-six.
Eighty-six to ninety-two.
Mr. Smith.
I have to go back to eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four. Go ahead.
Let's open the roll on the balance of the items. Oh, eighty-six to ninety-two, okay. Okay, so those were called special by Mr. Zine. Mr. Smith, you want a reconsideration?
Asked reconsideration on eighty-three and eighty-four.
Okay, let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those are back before.
Special please on behalf of Mr. Parks.
Madam Kirk.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number nine, and that's confirmation of Mr. Bernardo Silva to the Board of Zoo Commissioners.
Okay, Mr. Silva comes forward. Colleagues, we do have a committee report recommending confirmation of Mr. Silva. Members of the council wishing to speak or ask questions of our commission nominee. Okay, seeing none, let's open the roll on confirmation, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service. Let's end that forthwith. And before proceeding to the next item, let me recognize Councilmember Reyes for our presentation this morning. Mr. Reyes, you have the floor.
Don't be shy, don't be shy. Thank you, Council President.
Hold on, Mr. Reyes, before you begin. Colleagues, I'm going to ask for your cooperation. It's getting a little loud in here. Councilmembers, if you have to have a conversation, if you can, please take it to the rear of chambers. Sergeants, I'm going to ask for your help, both behind the horseshoe as well as with the audience. Want to give our presenter all the attention he deserves. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for that courtesy. It gives me great pleasure to be here this morning with our honored guest, which includes our own Betty Wilson, Committee Director of Committee Affairs. Ms. Wilson has joined us with the Department of Disability. Members of the council, for those of you who may not know, October is National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And this year is a particularly special year for a number of other reasons as well. Two thousand and five marks the fifteenth anniversary of the Landmark Americans with Disabilities Act, an action that seeks to guarantee equal consideration and access to those with disabilities toward many facilities, buildings and structures. This year also marks the thirtieth anniversary of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, an action that was truly modeled with the idea that no child or individual should be left behind. And two thousand and five also marks the thirtieth anniversary of one of the leading advocate groups of disability rights in this country. That organization, of course, is the Western Law Center for Disability Rights. The Western Law Center for Disability Rights was founded in the city of Los Angeles in July nineteen seventy-five in memory of disability rights advocate A. Milton Miller and is the first cross-disability legal advocacy organization in the United States. The Law Center's mission is to promote the rights of people with disabilities and the public interest in awareness of those rights, thus protecting the possibilities for all. As I mentioned earlier, the Center is celebrating thirty years of effective litigation, mediation, education and leadership for the disability community in Los Angeles and in California. Since its establishment, the Western Law Center for Disability Rights has played a role in creating greater access to public services, businesses, employment and education opportunities for persons with disabilities. Indeed, one of its many noted programs is the Western Law Center for Disability Rights, Disability Mentoring Day, Los Angeles. This event is part of National Disability Mentoring Day and recognizes the importance of mentors and lives of successful people with disabilities. Disability Mentoring Day LA will bring seventy-five high school and college students with disabilities together with LA area business and government agencies for a day of job shadowing and learning from each other. In fact, one young woman, Teresa May Devera, participated in Disability Mentoring Day LA a few years ago. She uses a wheelchair and was mentored by the Dean of Loyola Law School and by two public interest attorneys. Today, she's a graduate student at Loyola Marymount University and, as some of you may recall, recently became one of our newest commissioners, appointed to Los Angeles Commission on Disability. The Center has truly been one of our greatest advocates for our city, and for this reason, it gives you great pride and pleasure to declare today, October nineteenth, two thousand and five, as the Western Law Center for Disability Rights Day in the city of Los Angeles in celebration of the Center's dedication to and leadership in protecting the possibilities for people with disabilities. I'd like to present this certificate to Eve Hill, our Executive Director of the Western Law Center. Folks, let's give people a big round of applause for all the great work they do. I'd like to call up Eve Hill, representing the Center, please.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much for being supportive of the Western Law Center and Western Law Center Day and for being the host for the Western Law Center. We couldn't do the kind of work we do in any other city but Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Is anybody else?
Nope, that's it.
Short and sweet, and we'll be taking pictures out here, but let's take one group Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Coming back to next items before us. Madam Kirk, can we send items ten, eleven and twelve forthwith, please? Those are ordinance that have previously been approved. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number sixteen, and that was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas.
Okay, I just wanted to have an opportunity to review the details. Everything's fine on that, on that project. Thank you.
Okay, this is item sixteen.
Also on item twenty, which is next up.
Okay, on item sixteen and twenty then, colleagues. Any other members with questions or comments? Seeing none, let's open the roll on those two items, close the roll and tabulate the
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Next item is item number twenty-two, and that was called special by Councilmember Gruel.
And I believe this item is to be considered concurrently with items thirty and possibly thirty-one.
And I believe there's a request to continue thirty-one for thirty days, and the new date would be November eighteenth.
Great, and Mr. Padilla, if we could ask for a ten-minute public hearing on, on this item, on both sides if need be.
I don't think there's an objection to that, so if we can put up a ten-minute clock, Madam Kirk. Colleagues, item thirty-one, unless there's an objection, is to be continued for thirty days, so ordered, leaving items twenty-two and thirty before us. And so, let's reopen the public hearing. We have a clock set at ten minutes. Now, I'll call forward members of the public who are here to address the council on this item, and colleagues, ask that we make a special effort to be attentive to our public speakers here, beginning with Mr. Bill Eick, followed by Julianne Marseth, Steve Crunch, Candace Young, Elektra Kruger, Frank Buchanan, Cheryl Gressley. If you all would please form a line behind the podium that would expedite our hearing.
Yes, thank you very much, members of council. My name is Bill Eick, E-I-C-K. I live at nine six four seven Stonehurst Avenue, Sun Valley, California, and I'm the land use chairman of Shadow Hills Property Owners Association. We're opposed to this project. We're opposed to the general plan amendment. We're opposed to the zone change. We believe that the findings of fact do not justify the general plan amendment. The reason for that includes the fact that the slope density ordinance was, as far as I'm concerned, manipulated, and as the planning department basically said, well, the slope density ordinance is merely a starting point. However, when you get to start from third base, it's not too hard to get to home plate. If you actually have to start in the batter's box, it is harder to get to home plate. I've provided copies of maps. Mr. Weiss, this, this, this three hundred acres, this involves three hundred acres in your area, too, and because of the slope density ordinance in this, in this matter, you're going to find that what's, what happened that started out as fifteen houses is going to happen as twenty-nine because of the slope density ordinance issue. I can't explain, I mean, I have provided maps and the file is replete with why this project should not be approved. I, you know, we'll, thank you so much.
Okay, before the next speaker begins, let me, I guess, announce a couple of additional ground rules. We have a ten-minute clock set up for those of you who are here against the matter before us, including all the names that I've read, and there's some more speaker cards coming in. When these ten minutes are up, I want to sort of end public comment and then go to the cards of people who are here for the matter that's against us. I'm just trying to be fair with the time allotted for each side of the case, so that's the purpose of the clock. When it's up, even if we haven't gotten to everybody who's on your side of the issue, we're going to stop discussion, go to the other side of the issue, and then the council will begin its deliberations, so. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Julianne Marseth. I live at seven two one seven Tranquil Place in Tahunga. I'm here representing Falcon, the Foothill Area League of Conservation Organizations and Neighbors, which is seven different community conservation groups across the Foothill areas representing thousands of members. I'm here speaking against the Canyon Hills project. Our concern is that the overwhelming majority of community members do not agree with the results of the Plum hearing because the general plan and community plan amendments were granted, which made the slope density ordinance moot, as Bill Eick just explained, and because these actions erode our community's character and planning protections. We're great, we're greatly concerned, and we respectfully warn you, dear council members, that the slope density ordinance's original purpose in protecting public safety was essentially ignored. Please hear us. In addition, we register our protest with you that the community's voice was not given due process at the Plum hearing. For example, this document from the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council, which has been entered into the record, represents thousands of hours of people's research, and this research was not adequately paid attention to at the Plum hearing. Nevertheless, we're again submitting the following seven requirements of the Canyon Hills project and request that you ensure each of these seven points is legally binding and enforceable before final project approval is awarded. You should each have a copy of this before you. Point number one, landform grading. We understand that Whitebird has agreed to use this technique throughout the project. We request the grading is only done as the houses are built to minimize impacts. We request these points are specifically identified in the conditions of approval. Point number two, no sound walls. Since the project is in the scenic corridor and sound walls are inherently a visual blight, we prefer there are no sound walls at all. However, if sound walls are required, we request one or more of the following mitigations to be added to the conditions of approval. One, elimination of any and all sound walls where possible. Two, replacement of any and all sound walls with natural berms. Three, reduction of the length and height of sound walls. Four, planting and establishment of adequate landscaping to hide the sound walls from public view where they cannot be eliminated. Whitebird has made a commitment to eliminate nine lots near the I-210 freeway, as they did at the Plum hearing, but since it's not yet clear which lots are to be eliminated, the impact on sound walls is also not yet clear. This must be made a condition of approval by the city council today. Point number three, equestrian-capable RE forty lots. Our area is one of the few remaining equestrian communities in all of the city of Los Angeles, so it's a precious resource for the city. For many years, we've repeatedly stressed the need for integration of equestrian properties into this project on the north side, which is in keeping with our community plan. Now that this has passed the eleventh hour and zoning exceptions have already been granted for RE nine and RE eleven lots, we are still requesting that as many equestrian-capable lots as possible be configured into the project on the north side of the two-ten, and we ask for a commitment from you all today on the specific number of such lots with deed restrictions never to be subdivided and that this is a condition of approval by the city council. Point number four, no gate or kiosk restricting access. Our community does not want gated projects in our area at all. We do not want to install walls to separate community members, and we do not want to encourage any home buyers who seek to live in isolation within a gated community from the rest of us. This factor needs to be eliminated from the project since it's not a requirement for private road, does not impact the lighting requirements nor any public safety liability. Please make this a condition of approval. Point number five, preservation.
Let me interrupt you for a second. Pause your clock. You're now less than five minutes left for this side of the argument, and there's folks behind you wishing to speak, so just remind me, the more time you take, the fewer folks get to speak.
I understand, thank you. Point number five, preservation of specific areas within the project site as open space in perpetuity. We understand Whitebird has agreed to dedicate and transfer title of the property on the south side as well as property on the north side to the west of the development. We're requesting title on all areas mentioned be transferred prior to the earliest of the following. One, issuance of a grading permit. Two, filing of a final track map. Three, issuance of a building permit. We request this be a condition for city council approval of this project. We request also there's a conservation easement or other mechanism assuring private open space on the north side within the development area remain as open space and not be developed later, and specifically, there was something in the development agreement clause that eliminated conditions for purchase of four lots or fewer, and we understand this has been severed from the package. Point number six, creation of a multipurpose trail system. Whitebird has made a commitment to dedicate a portion of the northern perimeter to multi-use trail access. We want this fully identified on the revised map. We also request the trail system on the north side remain a natural one in keeping with decades of trail usage and that city requirements do not be established, which would erode the trail ecosystem valuable to the, the users. Whitebird's also made a commitment to dedicate the south side, but there's not yet been adequate clarification of who's going to be responsible for the construction of the proposed equestrian park and the completion of the north side trail along the Tuna Canyon Road. We understand there was a prior condition which required Whitebird to construct a park before grading commitment, grading permit could be issued. This must be legally clarified. Last point, number seven, realignment of access north of prominent ridge line designated on the Duke property but not designated on the Whitebird property. Whitebird's indicated they're willing to realign access, so only, there's only one point of entry rather than two, which reduces impact, but this has not yet been clarified in terms of Duke's agreement and responsibility. We also request the canyon nearby not be filled in once an alternative entry route through the Duke property is established, and there must be specific written agreements between Whitebird and Duke and a revised map before final approval is given. We respectfully request you approve all these seven points, and we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. We have, please introduce yourself.
Steve Crouch with Canyon Area Preservation, seventy-one thirty-six, a step a drive in Tahunga. All right, there's a lot of facts that have gone on here, you know, there's been facts generated by hundreds and thousands of people for years. Mr. Rosendahl, you've been in business. Would you sign an agreement that let the other party not follow any of the conditions? That's what this development agreement is. I encourage everybody to read the facts, read the information, study what's been, what's been done. We have spent thousands of hours, we have virtually been ignored. Mr. Reyes, if you ran a department like the planning department and you found out a staff member was talking with an applicant and, and working out ways to, you know, to get around rules, this is the situation. Our, our laws and our intent have been undermined by loopholes. Basically, Bob Sutton and Jack Rubens, lawyer for the, for Whitebird, have rewritten our laws. All of us don't want this to happen. Thank you.
Candace Young, seventy-one thirty-six, a step a drive. First of all, you should know that the neighborhood councils have done their job, that they were created for, and that is to advise the council, and several neighborhood councils have advised this council to disapprove this project. We're deeply disappointed and discouraged in this process. In the meantime, we have an overriding question that has not been answered. Why wasn't an RE forty zone change considered with grading just for the house pads? Why wasn't this considered? If it was, a GPA would not have been necessary. All the, the alternatives in the EIR were not considered, and that needs to be done. There are absolutely inadequate overriding considerations for this, this development.
My name is Elektra Kruger. I live at one zero five four four Mahoney Drive in Shadow Hills. I am against this proposal as it is proposed. About ninety-eight of the grids in the map are over fifty percent. The regulations of the slope density ordinance are directed toward minimizing problems with soil erosion and slope instability. Therefore, circumventing that ordinance with a GPA negates the community plan's intention to minimize such problems associated with development in steep terrain. A clustered development within the minimum density land use designation zoned RE forty subject to the slope density is feasible. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to just introduce for the record the other speaker cards against the proposal that had been submitted, Frank Buchanan, Cheryl Gressley and Mary Ann Guyer. Thank you very much for being here. We now turn to public comment for people who are here for the proposal, beginning with Fritz Bronner, Stary Fielding, Carol Schatz, Jack Rubens and Laura, is it Riddle? Riddick?
Could I ask for the indulgence of the council, since there are only three other speakers, to just let them speak? And I know they'll be brief. If I could have the three remaining speakers, if my council colleagues, we could extend the public comment period to take into consideration those three.
There's no objection?
Thank you.
Frank Buchanan. Cheryl, Mary Ann.
Hello, I'm Frank Buchanan. I'm a resident of Latuna Canyon. My address is eight three five one Latuna Canyon Road, and I'm speaking here because in nineteen seventy-eight, when the two-ten freeway was being built at the top of the canyon, which is one point eight miles from my property, there was a devastating flood that wiped out many houses in the area, including two houses on what is now my property. This horrible flood was just the two-ten freeway. This project that's going in, the Canyon Hills project, will be actually a little bit closer to my property and will be connected to my property's wash by a drainage tunnel that goes under the two-ten freeway that has very little water going through it now. I fear greatly that the mitigations in place for floodwater control have not been addressed correctly. I have checked city plans in the EIR, and I'm astonished that my property and my neighbors' properties will all be subjected to this kind of flooding once again. I would also like to comment on the situation of the Latuna Canyon Road. It needs to be straightened and widened. Where it bends in one lane right in front of my property, I have counted multitudes of accidents just over the last two years alone with cars going upside down and on fire. It's like a war zone. Thank you very much for listening.
My name is Cheryl Gressley. I live at one oh three three six Penrose Street in Latuna Canyon. I've lived there for forty-nine years, and I just have one thing to say. I really feel like our council hasn't been listening to us about this project, and we have an existing project in Latuna Canyon, and it is in a disarray, the ledge track, and I just want you as, to look to what is correct and right for our future within the conformity of our community in Latuna Canyon and the Verdugo Hills of Sunland Tahunga. The ledge track of thirty-four lots is in such disarray that the Whitebird Canyon Hills project of two hundred lots, two hundred and thirty lots on the steep hillsides of the Verdugo Hills still needs to have some deep thought put into it before it is allowed to go any further. Thank you.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. My name is Mary Ann Guyer. I live at one oh three three eight Latuna Canyon in Sun Valley. I'm president of the Foothill Trails Neighborhood Council, and the two neighborhood councils that represent this area and this project have spent thousands, tens of thousands of hours reviewing the EIR and going through this process and are overwhelmingly in opposition to this GPA. I was one of the original people that work on the slope density ordinance. The city process is not complying with that slope density ordinance. It's not only affecting Wendy's area, it's affecting a lot of council people's districts. To find, for developers or city staff to work on finding loopholes for this slope density ordinance is a disgrace, and after we've spent so much time on this particular project that is going to be devastating to our community, to allow ten minutes of public comment is an absolute disgrace.
Thank you very much, and just for the record, this is not the only public hearing that's been held on this item. Previous public hearings have been held in committee as well as the commission level. We now turn to members of the public who are here for the proposal. I read the names previously. If you would all please come forward and form a line behind the podium that, too, would expedite our public hearing. We're going to reset the clock for ten minutes and get to as many speakers as we can. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Jack Rubens with the Shepherd Mall and Law Firm.
I'm Jack Rubens with the Shepherd Mall and Law Firm on behalf of the project applicant, California Whitebird, Inc. We are very pleased and quite relieved to finally come before you at the end of what has been a 10-year process. The Canyon Hills project is the culmination of thousands of hours of work by the project developer and its principal, Rick Purcell, the community, planning staff, and the council office. California Whitebird originally proposed 280 homes on the 887-acre site, a clustered project that maximized preservation of open space, although not quite as much as we thought it did, as it's now turned out. Everyone who has worked on this project is very proud of it. It's a fine project and very different from the typical masqueraded projects that you see in and around this community. When the project reached the city planning commission, council member Grul requested that the development contemplated on the south side of Interstate 210, there are two development areas, development area A on the north and development area B on the south. She requested that all development in development area B on the south side of the freeway be eliminated. And the city planning commission did so. They also reduced the number of units as a result from 280 to 230 units. This was a significant reduction in the size and scope of the project, but California Whitebird recognized, and Rick Purcell recognized, the importance of this issue to the community and accepted the result and did not appeal it. But we weren't quite done yet. It is important to note, though, that while the city planning commission didn't permit any development on the south side of the freeway as part of this project, at that point, the developer retained the right in the future as part of another project to develop on the south side of the freeway. So when this matter reached Plum after a seven-month period, on October 3rd, council member Grul made another request. She asked that California Whitebird voluntarily agree to donate the entire south side of the property for free. Mr. Purcell did not have to do that, but at the conclusion of the Plum hearing on October 3rd, he did. And the reason he did that was because, again, he recognized, and this has been his longstanding mantra to the community and to the city, that he wanted to provide significant and real benefits to the community in consideration of developing this project. And so he agreed to council member Grul's request. This project's hallmark is obviously the open space. Of an 887-acre site, approximately 746 of those acres, about 85%, will be preserved as open space. And approximately 607 of those acres will be dedicated as public open space and donated to presumably the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. That is an enormous amount of land. And I don't think there's been another project in the city outside of perhaps Playa Vista where there's been anywhere near that type of dedication of open space. The project is very distinctive in other ways, but I think you're aware of that, and I'm not going to take the time of the council now to discuss it. One of the most, what I do want to take a moment to do is discuss all the people in the city who have helped with this project. And when a project is in the pipeline, as long as this one is, one of the most rewarding aspects has been the opportunity to work with many dedicated city staff who have spent long, long hours on this project. And they seldom get the recognition they deserve. So in particular, I would like to thank and recognize Emily Gabel-Luddy, Fernando Tovar, Bob Sutton, and Bob Duennas, all of whom worked tirelessly on this project and made it a better project at the end. Special thanks are due, if I can find him in the room, to Dale Thrush, who is council member Grul's planning deputy. Dale has had to withstand a lot of pressure on this project from all sides. It's been very controversial, as you can see, and he's done an amazing job, remaining unflappable as always, and finding common ground when it was in very short supply. And finally, of course, we would like to thank and recognize council member Grul, who has had the Solomonic task of trying to balance the critical need for housing in the Sunland Tahunga community, and there is a critical need for housing in that community. We have hundreds of supporters, 350 supporters in writing in the support book we've provided to you, some of whom, by the way, are here today, and you might want to stand up for a moment, the supporters for the Canyon Hills project. The support book, the support book that you have includes written support from 350 supporters who live in the Sunland Tahunga community. What Wendy did was forge a compromise that perhaps no one is entirely comfortable with, but that's generally the mark of a good compromise. 250 units might have been a little more Solomon-like, but we're going to accept the 221 units, recognizing that that's going to provide a level of security to the community, that this project will maximize open space and minimize environmental impacts. With that said, we'd like to request that you adopt the findings of the, and the recommendations of Plum, subject to the modifications in two council motions that we've had a brief opportunity to review and that we concur with, that we'll request a few additional conditions asked for by the council office. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Laura Riddle. I live at 10070 Jimenez Street in Lake Futeres, and that is within the council district two, unlike many of the opponents to this project that have brought people as far away as Malibu. I thank you all for being here today, and you guys had somebody from Malibu at the last meeting, for being here and hearing the public comments. And my comment to you is that I'm a daughter of Los Angeles. I was born in 1971 at Cedar Sinai and have never lived outside the city limits. And what decision you're gonna make today is going to affect people for years to come. And I encourage you to approve this project, and I also want to remind you that we are in a crisis for housing. And when I look at my own child, I wonder, where are you gonna live? You know? If my house was built in the 50s and people are fighting any development so vehemently, where are the kids of LA gonna live? And I present that to you today, and I strongly encourage you to, you know, greenlight this. And what are you gonna answer in five or six years' time when people ask you, wow, how did you alleviate the housing shortage in the 2000s? Are you gonna say, yeah, I made it harder, and I passed ICU, ICOs to make it harder to build, and I, you know, and I put a lot of red tape in there? Or are you gonna say, no, I really tried to streamline things and get creative and innovative and get more housing? Because after all, we're the largest city in the largest state. Our GDP is larger than France and Germany's. I mean, come on. What, what kind of economy are we gonna have if we don't have housing for our workers? You know, what, what kind of future can we offer people? I present before you, and I don't know who I can hand this to, but the fastest-growing communities are in the West. We're in the West. We're a fastest-growing community. I want to point that out. You know, we're, we're not gonna sustain an economic viable state without housing. It's the simplest thing. So I really encourage you guys to approve this project, to approve other projects, and to look to the 20 years to the future. Where are your kids gonna live? Where are your children's children gonna live? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Fritz Brauner, and I live in Lake Futeres. We've heard a lot of voices and opinions. And out of the rabble, there's been one clear voice and one clear vision, and that has been brought to the council by council member Wendy Grul. This is a unique historic opportunity to preserve permanent space as far as preservation for the future. 85% of this property is gonna go for the public, for all of Los Angeles to enjoy this crown jewel. The developer has been speaking to the community and listening to their ears since May 1995 and had hundreds of meetings and listened to hundreds of comments. And council member Wendy Grul has managed to put together, I believe, the best plan for all of us to live as far as to preserve these open spaces, to prevent urban sprawl, to chip away at this, this crown jewel for all of LA and all of its future children to enjoy. So I urge you all to support council member Wendy Grul's proposal. Thank you very, very much.
Hi, I'm Stevie Fielding, 9510 Latuna Canyon, in Latuna Canyon. And I do support this project. I do see it as a small amount of private land which is going to protect an awful lot of open, beautiful space and a lot of wild animals. The property being built on is private property that I don't believe is being used a lot right now. The greatest need is to protect and maintain our current country and equestrian zoning and, and properties in this area. And this developer has worked to help increase and improve the, the ability for us to keep our country properties. He's mitigated, because horse trails would be too, too, not too expensive, sorry, too steep in the development itself. The development, if they put in DG, it will wash away. If they don't put in DG, it'll be too slippery for any equines, it'll be great for walking, that's okay. He did ask the community what we wanted over years of the Latuna Canyon Community Association, that when I was on the board, he came to us year, time and time again, and in the Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council. We got a lot of input, and he tried to grant a lot, including helping us to fence a trail from Sunland Boulevard up Latuna Canyon, around, getting us to be able to go around in back of the dam which Doc Bradley said we needed to get to, the Equestrian Center, which they're donating to the community. So I do support this, and I do think it would be a good idea to have a little bit of activity at the north end of Latuna Canyon where right now the main activity is dumping and people living in tent cities and parking carts. Thanks.
Well, the time is up, but just as we did with the other side of the issue, we'll allow one more person to speak.
Good, because I ran all the way down here. President Padilla, council members, my name is Heidi Paul. I live in Lake Futeres in council district two. As much as everybody would like to save the community plan, they are subject to change due to economic and population pressures. If we save this community plan, we lose this open space, which I think is dearer to the hearts of everybody around here than a simple community plan. If we build on this property by maintaining the buy right and keeping the community plan intact, sooner or later, this entire property will be developed. 10 or 20 years from now, it will happen. So I think our best solution is to change the community plan, go with Ms. Grul's negotiations with the developer. You are almost never gonna find a development where 85% of the space is maintained for public use. You can't ask the developer to give up any more than you would to ask anybody in this room to give up 85% of their property. I strongly support Wendy's negotiations with the developer. I strongly support this plan, and I think it's really the best that we can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's gonna conclude public comment for people who are here for the proposal. Carol Schatz was introduced earlier, her cards are going in as part of the record. I now want to bring forward someone with just general comments on this, Mr. Joe Edmiston. Thank you two for being here.
Mr. President, members, Joseph Edmiston, Executive Director of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. I want to add my congratulations to council member Grul. It's an awful lot of open space, 85% is a very good precedent. Let's make that precedent throughout the city of Los Angeles. Second issue, we do have a lot of open space. We have a lot of need to patrol, police, and maintain that open space. And when the development agreement comes before you, you should make sure that the developer, in return for the assurances of the development agreement, make sure that there is operations and maintenance money so that open space can be used by all the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Okay. This once again concludes public comment on this item. We now begin with council discussion. Before recognizing council member Grul, the member of the district, I want to recognize council member Reyes is the chair of the Plum Committee.
Thank you, Council President. And I rise one to congratulate Councilman Grul and her staff and the planning department. This has been many years in the making. And colleagues, this is one of those issues where we weigh a whole series of benefits, given the cost that is being assessed not only to the developer, but to the community and for future generations. This is one of those projects that talk about our watershed issues, talks about our natural habitats, the pressures for building housing, maintaining our equestrian character of the last remaining open spaces of this great city. And I'm, and I must say, as you have heard, close to 85% of all of the acreage that makes up this project will remain open space. So I know it with heavy heart that many have to accept the housing that's being proposed, but in the greater context, it's probably the best-case scenario, given all the benefits that are being generated. And I want to make sure Councilman Grul addresses those benefits and those issues. But in the context of process, we had over 88 speaker cards on this item. We had designated time for both sides. We asked the staff, if you'd like to come to the table, please, come on forward. We had issues raised as to how the city was addressing some of the key factors, such as slope density. And I just wanted, for the record, put forth some questions that speaks to the professional approach and judgments being made by our staff to this council. So from a slope density point of view, and given the questions raised, we are working with licensed engineers and technical staff that have asserted the various formulas that allows us to follow the code and laws as they've been given to deal with these kinds of changes in regards to the built-out that's being proposed.
Thank you, Councilman Member Reyes. President Padilla, members of the council, Emily Gabel-Luddy, Deputy Advisory Agency. Yes, we were asked many, many times by the council office to reexamine the slope density ordinance as it was written, to determine if the items that were submitted were in compliance with that ordinance as it's written, and we reached the conclusion that, yes, they were.
And we disagree with that.
And the community disagrees with that.
I understand. Given the amount of open space, did we allow for enough of an opportunity for us to deal with the watershed issues, given the degree of built-out that's being proposed?
With respect to the plan amendments and zone changes that were requested, part of the plan's objectives is to minimize grading, encourage landform grading, and cluster housing. The plan amendments will-
Sorry, Mr. Duennas. Can we have the sergeant, please, control our conversations? It's hard to hear the speaker when we have so much going on around us in this horseshoe. Thank you. Mr. Duennas?
Again, with the plan amendments and zone change, what it will allow is the clustering of the 221 homes, single-family homes, on approximately 142 acres of land over the 887 acres of the entire project site, of which approximately 607 will be public open space. In a nutshell, it does cluster the development to one side of the site, maintain a lot of open space untouched, ungraded, to preserve watersheds and preserve the open space for the larger whole.
And we've been able to analyze the layout so that we preserve as much of the natural features of this property to extent possible?
That is correct. One of the significant steps that occurred in the recent weeks was the fact that developer volunteered not to develop the south side of the site, which is south of the freeway, donated that to public land, which significantly increased the untouched natural open space. And again, within the northern portion, he's using landform grading techniques which helps preserve a lot of the natural state of the site.
Great. Again, I just wanted to congratulate Councilman Grul and her staff. This has been a very, very tough process, planning for putting the hours necessary to reach the type of scenario that tries to address everyone's priorities, but of course does not make everyone happy. But given the pressures of housing, given the pressures of open space, and the maintenance of our watershed, I truly believe, colleagues, that this is probably one of the scenarios that gives us the best win-win that could have been agreed upon through this process. And again, I ask for an eye vote on the Plum Committee report.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And colleagues, as you can see, this has not been a very easy issue for me. And all of the speakers who today who are opposed are people I have worked with on a number of issues and agreed with on a number of issues, and agree with a lot of what they said today. And so I just want to acknowledge the hundreds and hundreds of hours that these people have put in to addressing the issues in this project.
put in to addressing the issues in this project. And we would not be standing here today, and I know they may not appreciate that, we would not be standing here today with some of the achievements in this document, what you have before you today, without their hard work. And I just want to acknowledge that because that comes from the heart to all of you. And I just want to say thank you. Colleagues, as policymakers, we struggle to find the balance between constructing more housing to alleviate the city's housing shortages with an equally important need to build more parks and trails, green spaces, and preserve undeveloped open space for future generations. That's why I fought very hard, and again, with some of the opponents today and the proponents, to preserve open space throughout the Sunland to Hanga area, including the passage of the Scenic Preservation Quarter Plan, which was a historic document that the City Council helped adopt, the purchase of 145 acres in La Tuna Canyon to create one of the largest parks, the fourth largest parks in the entire city of Los Angeles, to a passive park adjacent to the Big Tonga Wash. And I have utilized, and I want to thank Bill Icke, who serves on the VNOC, all of my Prop K money for open space has been utilized in this area. The Canyon Hills issue and project has been one of the most challenging issues I have had to face as a City Councilmember. The issue today before you is whether to ratify Plum's decision to grant a general plan amendment and zone change, which allows the developer to cluster 100, excuse me, 221 homes on the north side of the 210 freeway and requires dedication of 608 acres of public land. I've said this before at every hearing, if I could say no to the general plan amendment and zone change and could stop the project altogether, you all know me, I would say no. I would say no and ensure that that is something that we could accommodate. And that's probably the most politically expedient thing for me to do, but it's not an option. Because when you look at that option, opposing the plan outright would allow the current, and more importantly, any future developer, to build 169 five-acre ranches that could easily be subdivided into 350 smaller lots in the future, that would leave virtually nothing on the site as it exists today. Without the general plan amendment, we will doom this open space to dense development over the next decades if the 169-lot subdivision occurs. I believe we cannot take this risk. Furthermore, in the case of Canyon Hills, the general plan amendment and zone change will discourage development of the surrounding properties because it creates new infrastructure on a condensed part of the site, so it will not facilitate development of the surrounding properties. It is because of the perseverance and the passion of my community that I've looked at alternatives and revisions to the Canyon Hills project as proposed by the developer in order to accomplish one goal, to preserve the maximum amount of open space in perpetuity and the smallest number of lots necessary to accomplish that objective. That has been what I have said from day one of being able to preserve property and land in the future for perpetuity. The Canyon Hills project is 887 acres it covers, bigger than New York's Central Park. The Canyon Hills project has gone through several iterations, beginning with over 600 lots some 10 years ago, ending with the developer's proposal for 280 lots that went to the Planning Commission in February. I told the Planning Commission in February that I opposed the 280 homes and north and south of the freeway. I recommended the elimination of all development on the south side except for a proposed equestrian center and that the smallest number of lots be clustered on the north side only, and in area where considerable development already exists. I said then and now that the number of lots should be the smallest amount that enables us to preserve the entire south side while not neglecting viewshed, trails, or design standards. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the zone changes and general plan amendments necessary for a cluster development, and they recommended 230 lots north. But they did not preserve the entire south side. The community and I agreed that we could do better. Since the Planning Commission's decision, the community led by Bill Icke and Don Keen has raised legitimate concerns, and you heard about this today, to further challenge this project, in particular on the slope density ordinance. The serious concerns that they raised allows the current calculations were used to reach the allowable number of homes that could be built on the entire property. For the last 10 months, I have aggressively and repeatedly, and I want to say that again, aggressively and repeatedly challenged the planning department and the city attorney's office to look at a way in which we could limit the number that was allowed under the slope density and to eliminate the wide range of possibilities and results for future developments and to implement, excuse me, to eliminate the wide range of possible results. But they kept telling me I had no option. So I introduced a motion last week or the week before, which asks this council to have an interim control ordinance that would suggest that we could have some control and that, as Mr., I think it was Bill or others mentioned, that this not be a precedent that is set as far as what map they can use. The Plum decision, as you have heard, granted the plan amendment and zone change to reduce the number of lots on the north side of the freeway to 221, eliminate all of the development on the south side of the freeway, and dedicate all of the south side land to the public through the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, which guarantees that that property, that the entire property, will be designated open space in perpetuity. And I had an opportunity last Friday to have a helicopter ride to look at all of the brush clearance areas and the fire damage and all of that. And when you look at that south side and there's no development on that south side, that is going to stay the way it is. And that, I think, is an accomplishment that all of us can be very happy about. And I will conclude in a minute, I know I'm over time, Mr. President. The community's diligence has allowed us to permanently preserve a total of 750 acres, the size of 600 football fields, 600 football fields, of open space and prevent any further development. That means 85% of the Canyon Hills property will be preserved as open space. I credit the community for helping us get to that point that we stand here today. The community demanded that this precious space be preserved, and I believe that this is the best possible way to guarantee that result. You have before you today, colleagues, two amending motions. A majority of what Ms. Marseth indicated in her recommendations are included in these two amendments. And I know there's one question I want to ask Ms. Gabel, Gabel-Letty, I was going to say Letty Gabel, sorry, Gabel-Letty, is on the importance of language related to the dedication of the open space. And if you could read, I think you have some language that we would also add to those two amending motions.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruel. The consideration the council member is asking for is a modification of a condition that's identified as the public discussion meeting condition, both in the zone change action and in the tract map action. We currently require that the delineation of the public open space be shown at the time the advisory agency holds a public discussion meeting. But I think the council could consider that, in addition to requiring the delineation, that the subdivider also submit a copy of a letter of intent to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy to dedicate the public open space in order to assure the city that the developer is continuing to move forward with the final dedication. So it would be a letter of intent, copy of which to be given to us, which will be made available to the public at the time we have the discussion meeting. And this is prior to any grading permits on the tract.
And I think it is important to note, because you heard from some of the opponents today, have they been heard, have they been listened to? These items were added based on the discussion that they've had, not only with my office, but the developer, and just even two days ago, less than two days ago, with the community. So I stand here today with a, I think Ed mentioned, a heavy heart, because it's not been an easy decision. It is one that I believe, again, allows us to save as much open space as possible today and ensure that. And I would ask my colleagues to adopt the Plum Report and the two amendments and look forward to, I think, is also Mr. Edmiston's say, that if this can be our precedent setting, which is 85% of a project be dedicated open space, we've made some accomplishments here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you for your indulgence, Mr.-
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I rise for two reasons, colleagues. The first is to congratulate Ms. Gruel. You've really done something extraordinary here that so many people in the future who will, they won't know who any of us are and they won't know who you are, will nonetheless have you to thank for ensuring that that land is always permanently preserved as open space. Because there's one thing that's become clear to all of us as we've served in these jobs, is they ain't making any more open space in Los Angeles. And so when you can preserve as much of it forever as you have done today, Ms. Gruel, you deserve to be congratulated. And I will say to her friends and constituents here today that, in my view, she deserves to be congratulated for one additional reason, which is there is a temptation when you have an elected position to take the easy way out and to just say no. That's after all what people come to your office and ask you to say. They say, just say no. I have no doubt that if the council member had taken that position, it would have made for a great headline today and for a disastrous result for the environment tomorrow and for years to come. It would not have been the environmentally responsible thing to do. It would not have been in the best interests of the people of this city, would not have been in the best interest of the wildlife that it is so important to preserve. And so for taking that courageous, but responsible, and intellectually the only honest and legally viable alternative, you are to be congratulated, especially because not everyone, frankly, will understand that that's why you did what you did. But you did it for all the right reasons. The second reason I rise, colleagues, is just to emphasize that in this matter, as in so many other matters, where we are here in a quasi judicial capacity, I want the record, in case it is ever reviewed in the future, to be very, very clear. This matter received a full, extensive, fair hearing at the Plum Committee chaired by Mr. Reyes. Many, many more people testified at that committee on both sides of this issue than testified today. There wasn't even greater discussion of all of the relevant issues at that committee than there was today, because committee permits those sorts of in-depth discussions between council members and city staff and other policymakers. There was a substantial amount of give and take between the committee and the people who testified. There was a substantial amount of material that was reviewed by committee members, and as a result of that, a report was prepared that encapsulates the essence and important aspects of what occurred at that committee. That report is now before the council today. It's been reviewed by the council. It is being relied upon by council members in casting their votes. I want to say that because I don't want anyone who ever reviews this matter in the future to think that the four corners of what was spoken today amount to the four corners of what was considered today. That would not be accurate. Mr. Reyes, you are to be congratulated for the manner in which you conduct Plum hearings. They are thorough, they are fair, they are extensive. They ensure that a complicated matter such as this one receives due process and then some. On the basis of that entire record, I join Ms. Gruel in asking for an i-vote and asking for approval of the amendments that have been put forward today.
Mr. Labons?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to rise on this issue. Mr. Edmiston, could you come to the center microphone, please, again? Joe Edmiston from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. It is difficult, I think what Mr. Weiss said there, and I believe this all the time, every lot in Los Angeles is going to be built on, but there is a, how many acres is this in total, do you know?
Over what, 600?
887.
897.
887.
887. And how many acres go to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy?
It's around 680.
That's a tremendous asset to the future. It's very difficult when your neighborhood changes. And I have the old Hollywood Hills, and there's parcels that Joe has helped acquire over the years and lookouts, and this has been a tremendous task, but there's some give. There's some give on this. Mr. Reyes heard it in commission. Ms. Gruel, you and your staff have worked very hard on it, but to get 600 acres, and I know a lot of people don't, you know, like any development, but to be able to acquire this is a great asset to Los Angeles' future generations. And those who pass on this highway through that area, which is still one of the few close spots to the city where you could drive, and I know I went up there two winters ago when there was falling snow on the peaks there and felt real good that I could see that within 20 minutes of downtown Los Angeles. So Ms. Gruel, I know it, as you said, very tough and very difficult, and your staff, but I think it's been a, and thank you, Mr. Edmiston. I think the planning department has worked to the best interest of the people for the most good. I rise to support this. Thank you, Ms. Gruel.
Mr. Carthanas?
I've had the pleasure and the honor of running against Wendy Gruel in this same community. And this particular site is a very coveted site by everyone who cares about that community. And one of the things that I wanted to do at this moment in time is thank Wendy for doing a tremendous job here. As was said earlier, a lot of unhappy people, a lot of dissatisfaction, but the truth of the matter is, it's real easy for a politician to hear people, to see people come into their office and do the simple job of just saying no. Their life becomes much easier, they can spend much more time with their family, and they can do a lot of other things and have a lot less stress. So when I saw this issue coming before the Plum Committee, I kind of chuckled and said, whoa, here it comes. This issue that I know a lot about, this issue that Wendy and I actually debated, and this issue, now that I see it in detail as to what has come to fruition, is a great, great opportunity for the community. Because when you get one side of the property where you're guaranteeing forever that they're not going to have development, and on top of that, it's going to be discouraging, not preventing, but discouraging other neighboring properties on that side of the freeway not to piggyback on that infrastructure that is not going to exist, this is a big plus for the community. And this is something that, quite frankly, I don't think Wendy and I envisioned when we were actually debating this issue out in that community, that it could actually come to a compromise where 750 acres is dedicated forever so that our children and their children's children can go across that community and see what we see today, at least on the majority of it. And I think what was said in the committee is true and what was said on this floor. It's easy for a politician to say no, but you never know which politician's going to be there in six or eight years, and you never know what new developer's going to be there and how connected they are, maybe to the President of the United States, who gets their hands on that property, and then all of a sudden you see the color and the issue change, and then you really have a disaster on your hands. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to applaud a project that has a lot of dissatisfaction, but has a lot of honesty about what is a good compromise, that is good for the city of Los Angeles, and that has had a lot of headaches, a lot of stress from people who want to do good policy and not a bunch of chickens who just want to say no or just want to say yes and then go about their business. This is what really policymaking is about. So thank you, Wendy, for sticking up for the people who are elected to make tough decisions like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carthanas. Other members of the council wishing to speak on this item? Seeing now, we do have a couple of amending motions. Madam Kirk, do we take item 22 or 31?
Counsel should take item number 22 first.
Okay, let's open the roll on the amending motion to item 22. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Now on item 22 as amended, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. We now come to item 30. We have an amending motion on that item as well. Let's open the roll on the amending motion. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And now on item 30 as amended, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved as well. Let's send both of those items forthwith. Madam Kirk, next item, please.
Next item is item number 24, and that was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and congratulations again to Ms. Gruehl. I think this is an appropriate item to come forward next, and I think colleagues spoke so eloquently not only about the need for reasonable ways of getting to yes in this city because we so often get to no, but more specifically, I wanted to publicize to those folks who are viewers on Channel 35 and of course around this horseshoe, our moderate home ownership purchase, sorry, moderate income purchase assistance program for aspiring homeowners who are faced in this market where we are not building enough to meet our population's needs, a very difficult housing market. Colleagues, it costs about, to afford an average median home in Los Angeles County now, which is well north of $500,000, to qualify for a loan, you need to earn about $130,000-plus dollars a year, which is not many Angelinos. In order to reflect that, the Housing Department, which has had for some time a moderate income purchase assistance program that we've been implementing but with very little success, not because we haven't put a good program out there, but simply because that housing market has been accelerating so rapidly, this action today will increase the program loan limits for households between 80 and 100% of the area median income. In other words, people who are 80% of that average or 120% of that average to be able to include households up to 150,000, sorry, 150% of area median income. So now if you earn one and a half times the average salary in Los Angeles, you can qualify for this, and it also authorizes an increase from $50,000 to $75,000 in the program, sorry, $80,000, I misspoke, in purchase assistance. If you're interested in becoming a homeowner in the city of Los Angeles, we encourage you, and colleagues, I would encourage you as well, to publicize in your e-newsletters and different ways that you communicate through your field deputies as well, that folks can call the moderate income purchase assistance program at (213) 808-8593. Homeownership really is the cornerstone of wealth creation, of stable communities, and as we look at building more housing in the city of Los Angeles in an environmentally sensitive way, in a way that reflects the growth of our population and essentially our children and grandchildren here, we encourage folks to be able to get on that. The train seems to be going away more quickly than we can sometimes save up, but hopefully this will slow that train down a bit. I thank the Housing Department for its good work in expanding the eligibility and hope that we can get that word out again. It's (213) 808-8593. I urge your support, colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 26, called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
That's fine, we can just let it go.
Okay, questions have been answered. Any other questions on item 26? Mr. Garcetti.
On this as well, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for making sure that we are doing all that we're supposed to. This represents, this could just go by through in consent, but I wanted to let folks know this is a pretty big change, and a lot of work reflected by the Community Redevelopment Agency and its board, its policy committee, on changing its housing policies. You'll remember in the controller's audit of the Community Redevelopment Agency that one of the big problems was oversight, making sure that our loan portfolio, that those projects that have gotten assistance from the CRA are living up to the requirements that we set out for them. And this new housing policy, one of the elements does just that. We recently passed in the Redevelopment Agency's annual plan, the ability for the agency to hire some folks who will monitor that entire portfolio of different projects and housing developments that we have out there in the city of Los Angeles, because we often give the subsidy to developers, but we have no idea if those developers have over time or when it changes ownership are still targeting those housing units for the low-income folks that our tax dollars, we've agreed, should go towards subsidizing. So this is a great step forward. There's a number of other things that make sure that it's a better-run policy that looks at some goals. And in our committee discussions, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Parks also pointed out trying to coordinate that with overall Housing Department's policies, to see if we can't have a single housing policy where we can for the city of Los Angeles. As the Housing Department develops that, we will bring that back and look at where the Redevelopment Agency and Housing Department can try to streamline that, to make it the same for nonprofit, for-profit housing developers, to know that it's the same rules that apply in different parts. But I wanted to thank the CRA staff, Madeline Janice Aparicio, who chaired the policy subcommittee of the board who worked on this, for great work, and it will make us a more responsible city in making sure that our dollars are targeted towards the folks that need it too. So I urge your support as well.
Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, what I did is I pulled back what I wanted to put in as an amendment. I don't want to hold on, hold back what's going on today. I want to make sure it moves forward. But one of the points I wanted to make is that for many of us who are proposing and trying to find ways to build housing, we find ourselves at that point where those who would contest and feel that enough is enough, but have a hard time understanding that they're living in very dense neighborhoods where people are living in attics and basements and vans in their driveways, who would eventually and could benefit from these new housing developments that are being built in the neighborhoods. The question becomes, how do we, given the law, both federal and state and all the requirements from the funding sources, support the process where the people that live in that area actually live in those units? So that those who live in fear of housings, who keep saying, "You keep building housing and bring in more people," when in fact, the goal is to lower the pressures of those neighborhoods who are already bursting at the seams. And therein lies the challenge, and I want to bring forward a motion in the future, working with our Housing Department Director and our Chair of the Committee, to look at that approach and figure out how we can best address the policy that doesn't violate federal law, state, or any other funding sources in terms of their requirements, but yet achieve that diffusion of that pressure built up in neighborhoods who do not have housing or sufficient housing to address that population base. So again, that is the intention, but I'll come forward on an independent, separate motion to make sure this moves forward. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendorf.
Yeah, I rise also, obviously, to support this motion, but I also want to make clear, as my colleagues are, that we want the agency to designate specific geographic areas, especially vulnerable to the loss of affordable housing. And we put a motion together, and both Councilman Reyes and Smith have co-signed it for me, and we're going to give it to you, Mr. Garcetti, and your committee. And what this basically does is give it a review of the 32 active redevelopment projects and the two revitalization areas and figure out exactly where we are with them, because there might be an opportunity to bring some of them back onto the tax rolls to help our general treasury, but more importantly, to give us a status and an update on all of them and then get periodic review. So when it goes to your committee and we have a 60-day timeframe to come back, I think we'll get a better picture of the overall processes that the CRA is doing, and I just want to make that and congratulate you on your motion.
Thank you, Ms. Rosendorf. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that's item 26. That's approved as well. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 40, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks. There is a Budget and Finance Committee report that has been submitted and distributed to the council members.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We just want to move the budget and finance report.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, let's open the roll on Mr. Parks's motion, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Next item is item number 47, and that was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the items that were continued to today, items 47, I'm sorry, that's the supplemental agenda. This is the issue on the antennas. If we can have staff come forward. I'm getting them confused there.
That's 86 through 92.
No, that's the personality issues. No, the 47 is the ordinance on the antennas, wireless antennas. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Zine. My name is Daniel Green. I'm a zoning administrator with the City Planning Department. The ordinance that's before you today is the culmination of about three years of work. We're trying to respond to a large number of applications, many of which have become routine in the manner in which they're filed and the outcomes. Most of these applications, over time, have been approved. Some years ago, the applications were being filed, and many of the projects were not aesthetically pleasing. Working with the industry over time, they have now, as a standard, come in with penthouse structures on the roof as described in this document, and in order to move these cases more quickly, rather than have each one reviewed, we thought that this ordinance, which would allow them by right, would reflect the actions we would take in the absence of the ordinance.
I understand that. The concern I have is that while 90% of them pass without a problem, there's 10% where community concerns arise and exist, and if we don't address those and we just give everyone the right to do that in that wireless industry with the neighborhood councils and their concerns, the homeowners organizations which have chimed in in the past to have their concerns, and some of the specific issues that we have in some of the scenic corridors, if this is by right, we may have some other problems. So what I'd like to see is, I don't have a problem with the 90% that pass without an issue. It's the 10%, if we don't have a fallback for those individuals to have some recourse, some type of appeal. And a suggestion came up that it would be appealed to the Planning Commission. I don't know if that would work the situation where those that create an issue, that we need to have an appeal. It's just if we do all of them, I know that the zones we're referring to are the commercial, the manufacturing zones, and sometimes we have a mixture in there. It's just that if we don't have some type of recourse, since we say we want neighborhood councils to get involved, we want homeowners organizations to get involved, then we throw our hands up and say it's by right, and there's nothing else we can do. How do we plug something in for that appeal if need be in those particular cases? As we see zones change, we see systems change in our city continuously.
The ordinance would not allow this provision to be applied where you have a scenic corridor. It's specifically exempted out. It also requires that the building be at least 36 feet in height. And so we've tried to focus only on those areas where you already have, relatively speaking, large buildings. If it's not on the roof of the building, it would not apply. If it's a monopole, it would not apply. If the building is one-story, it would not apply. So most properties in the city probably would not get a benefit from this. If you create a situation where something is appealable, then you've made it a discretionary application all over again.
But if we were to just focus on those specific issues, for example, the wireless industry, I remember years ago, we had Z-Channel, which you had a little antenna on your house, and then we've gone to cable, and now we've got the dish, and as technology changes, we know we've got satellite, we've got satellite phones. So all these wireless antennas for the cell sites, that may be taken over in the next few years with something else. I know that some areas, you drive, for example, down the San Diego Freeway in West Los Angeles, and you see this fake palm tree, which is an antenna on, I assume it's for the wireless industry. What we want to make sure is that while we give that 90% with no problem, the green light, those areas, those issues that may have a concern, if we don't leave an appeal for those individuals, we don't even recourse to those individuals, how do we flush that through? How do we tell the neighborhood councils that we're concerned about their neighborhoods and the homeowners organizations, but by the way, there's nothing we can do about this? That's the concern I have, that 10%, which in the report, it says there's about 10% which we could have a problem with.
The 10% might be those that have been appealed, but I think if you were to look back at the cases that have been appealed, most of them end up designed pretty much like this when it's said and done.
But the design changes, and once we grant that, while the technology is here today and the design is here today, and I've seen some where they have that little shack on the roof and you can't even tell it's, you can't tell what's in there, which is fine. I don't know the technical term they use for that.
Yeah, we call them penthouses.
Penthouses, okay. You have to be real small to fit in that little penthouse, but it doesn't negatively impact the community or the neighborhood. My concern is, once we put this in, those folks that have an issue, we have no recourse for them.
I understand. In the case where you're putting these penthouses on a roof, if the building didn't have the cellular facility on the roof, the building itself could be as tall as the penthouse and sometimes much taller than the penthouse. So we're not adding additional height to a building that's not allowed? There's no habitable area, there's virtually no traffic associated with the use?
I think the issue has always been the visual, the aspect of the visual blight. The fact is, maybe it's 30, 35, whatever the height is, but it's the visual blight that have been a concern to the people. And the area that I represent, we have a lot of folks with cell phones, as we do in the whole city, and these seem to be everywhere. The less visible they are, obviously, the better it is. But when they are visible, we receive the complaints, and I'm sure you know that area that I represent has had a number of complaints regarding the location of those antennas.
I understand what you're saying, Councilman. The city gets thousands and thousands of applications every year for some kind of building project, whether it's a home remodeling or a new office building or a shopping center. We're trying to focus our attention on those uses that require our resources, and we could review every single building permit in the city. I think what we're offering with the ordinance is an opportunity to try to focus the limited resources we have on the biggest problems, not to say that wireless is not an issue that deserves equal attention, it's just that we don't have the resources to look at every building project that comes our way equally.
I completely understand that. My concern, and I know we want to expedite that process through, I totally support that. I'm just concerned about those situations that come up where there is no appeal, there's no recourse for those community members, those homeowners organizations, those neighbor councils. That's what I'm trying to resolve so we can give them some out. And I understand the purpose of this, and I don't dispute that, but my concern is for those other groups that are going to come forward, and I know that we have some other colleagues who want to speak on this. I just think that there's got to be something put into this to give them that recourse and still satisfy your department with processing those that aren't an issue, process them through the system. Thank you.
Thank you. I have on the queue, Mr. Rosendorf, followed by Mr. Smith, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Labange. Mr. Rosendorf.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, one of the good things in our democracy is when you're a candidate for office, you're really out there with the people. And one issue that stuck in my brain, as many other issues have, has been this issue. Over and over and over again, people have said to me, "Is there a health concern with this stuff?" And I can't get an answer from anybody. And frankly, I am going to vote no for this, because I'm not going to by right allow these antennas in my district, and most of these zoned areas you're talking about are going through transformations now, where housing is happening, there's already existing housing there, and people have pleaded with me to get a better understanding of how these things work. People in the Pacific Palisades don't want it, people in Brentwood don't want it, people in Mar Vista, in Venice, in Delray, in Palms, in Westchester, in Playa del Rey, and West LA, throughout my district, don't want them. And I don't know if it's a cry in the wilderness and the sky isn't falling, but nobody has answered that question. Until I get a better understanding of the safety aspects of these things, I'm not going to grant by right anything to anybody. Can you respond to that about the health concerns?
Yes, I appreciate your comment. The federal government has preempted local jurisdictions, whether it's the city, the county, or the state. The language is specifically in the law. Every time we have a hearing notice, we quote it directly in the hearing notice. The city cannot deny an applicant because of health concerns. That's out of the city's purview.
I don't accept that logic, and the federal government, you know, have done a lot of things I don't believe in, and this is one area that I will fight, and I will not allow it in my district. If there's any laws my city attorneys can give me to butt me on that, I can tell you this, that the people in the 11th District have stood up strongly against this for a long time, and until I get some health understanding from the federal government, I'm going to resist any of these antennas, no by right in the 11th District. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the about 12 minutes I was on the planning committee when I was first elected, this issue was up in a committee, and I remember I had concerns that were brought about to me from the neighborhood councils and my own concerns on the by right, that we had some aesthetic controls, like we do currently in a regular zone case, where we can say we want it to be a tree, we want it to be a rock. There's a lot of options we have to beautify these things so the community doesn't look impacted. So what has been done in that year and a half, two years since that took place to address the issue of aesthetics on these buildings before we would allow them by right?
We had looked at what...
In my time.
Councilman, we had looked at what a number of cities had done locally and in other states, and there's a wide variety. Some cities have no regulation, and some have gone to a different extreme in the other I think what we're trying to portray here is that certain business of the city becomes routine, and when it becomes routine... And when it becomes routine, if we can have a response which is routine, it's in our best interests. Like any applicant or any developer, they're looking for certainty in the process. Neighbors are looking for certainty when they go to a hearing, they're wondering, is it going to be in our favor this time, or is the city going to act differently than the last time? And that's what we're trying to communicate with this ordinance. I think like any building, there are some buildings that are by right, entire buildings. We're talking about antennas that are smaller than a refrigerator, when it's all said and done. And it's on a building that's five stories or 12 stories in height. The general impression to the public is, it doesn't even exist. The antennas would be fully enclosed inside, there would be a roof over the antennas, so if you were at a higher elevation looking down, you couldn't see anything other than a box that has the same color and texture as the building walls. It would look like an integral component. It goes far beyond any requirement to enclose air conditioning, which is on a roof, which nobody seems to want to get involved with. Stairwells, air shafts, water tanks, there are a number of things on a building roof that if you've been in a helicopter or a plane flying low, you can see, it looks rather messy up there. This would be the only thing on the roof that would be required to be enclosed. And so, given the context, that it's going to be on a roof with a lot of other junk, if that's the word, our impression is that this is a step forward that should not be controversial. As I explained to Councilmember Rosendahl, we cannot use, we've been advised not to use health as an issue. It boils down to aesthetics. It's really a beauty contest, and this solution seems to work in other cases.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear on the record, because the objections we had gotten when I was on the committee for that few meetings, was the neighborhood councils were concerned about the aesthetic issue. So we've taken that into account now, and even though we haven't done that on other things on the roof, at least we're doing the right thing on this one. We're saying, cover it up, enclose it, so it's not going to be visible if you're from another rooftop looking down, or from a hillside looking down. It's not going to be any way obtrusive, you're going to, it's going to be hidden.
Correct. What, again, you can compare this to our buildings that could be 10 and 20,000 square feet that are by right. And I don't think the city is trying to regulate every building permit that would require a public hearing. Again, the table that I'm sitting at is larger than the facility that we're discussing. And so in proportion, and in context with what's being built in the city, it seems like a small step with some good effect for our staff.
Again, the important thing was, you addressed the issue that was brought up at the time.
It was.
It's now resolved in this ordinance. I thank Mr. Reyes for seeing that through, and resolving those issues that were brought up in neighborhood councils at the time. And with that, I'm willing to support that, because I think he's resolved the issues. The other issue is about neighborhood towers is a whole other issue, but this is not...
That's not covered by this ordinance.
That's not covered by that, and that's what you need on the record, so those watching on 35 understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want first to applaud Mr. Green for standing up and trying to deliver a message. And the message really is, over the past few years, we have been talking about the issues that planning faces. And we've asked them to streamline, be more efficient, look at the codes, look at the process. And what they've come up here with here is that they're focused on allowing antennas in commercial and manufacturing zones only, not in residential zones. So that's important to understand. So if we look at our districts, and you know your zoning patterns, you realize that that eliminates all of the issues residential, because it's not being allowed by right in residential areas, it's not. Two, we are keeping it within those structures that are above three stories high. So the antenna will not be observable, it'll be smaller than that table. So again, allows for a tremendous workload to be alleviated, so that our planners can do the other type of work that's been very, very pressing in our respective districts. Three, if you look at the language, we do highlight the fact that specific plans, historic overlay zones, scenic corridors, have special treatment. We're not going to allow those by right within those areas. And the most emotional factor that would take up a lot of time in Plum, it takes up a lot of time with planning and the city attorney's office, and when folks react emotionally to the fact that there's a health hazard. We're not saying it isn't, and we're not saying it is. What we do know is that the federal law prohibits us from engaging the health issues. So the FCC does not allow us to engage those issues. So half of the sessions we had in Plum when these items came up, that's exactly what people were bringing up. And at the end of their testimony, would have to say, we can't address it because it's FCC, federal law, and we're sorry. So colleagues, you have the ability, on a case-by-case basis, if you want to call in something special into this council, if you have the findings. This, I ask for your support, because it speaks to our mandate to make this city more efficient. We're trying to decrease the workload in the planning department, use their wisdom in advising us what areas we can move on, and which ones we should be more focused on. This deals with a whole slew of work that covers certain areas that are confined to commercial manufacturing zones. We built in criteria that'll keep it out of eyesight, and we're doing everything we can to minimize the association to schools and R1 residential zones. So with that, I ask for an I-vote.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. Green, just a question. Are you familiar with the city quite well, aren't you?
Yes.
High Period in Scotland, you ever seen that corner?
Yes, I have. I believe it's in your district.
And have you seen the cell towers that are approved there?
Yes.
And they're off the street lighting system of the private parking lot, correct?
Yes.
And that doesn't seem to offend anybody, I know. That type of cylinder on a streetlight, here's an electrolyre with a lamp here and a lamp here, Bill. And then right here is the straight pole up. Is that something that is acceptable to you? You're pretty artistic.
There have been cases where neighbors have opposed those kinds of installations.
Really? Because I hear when Mr. Zine was speaking earlier about a tree, a tree, was that a tree, Mr. Zine? I hear more people complain about that, because the tree doesn't look as real.
They would be more common, Councilman.
Yeah, but they get more complaints about those trees, because they're more real.
This ordinance doesn't affect either of those situations, only the rooftops of buildings.
Okay, so let me ask a question, though. Just because you're going to ask this question here, and maybe, I don't know, if ITAs here too. Why do they put little transmitters on every streetlight in the city of Los Angeles? I mean, little ones. Then you don't have to have a big one on a building, then you're not offending anybody. Is that being thought of? You've been around.
Yes, that has been a partial option, but what it doesn't do is give enough depth. You can provide immediate service for people in automobiles, or people walking on the street in the adjoining properties, but it won't go a quarter of a mile into the residential area to serve those people.
The spread of the air. All right, thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Cardenas.
The way this reads, it sounds like we really don't have authority on these by-right opportunities when it comes to putting these antennas on these buildings. Or do we have authority?
If you were to do this as a by-right feature, given the parameters of height and coverage of the roof, and color and texture, if you adopt the ordinance, then it would become by-right, and the applicant would go to the building department, still have to get a building permit.
Sure.
But they wouldn't have to go through a hearing process, and go through a discretionary fee and appeal route.
What's the status of our authority, according to the federal government? And when was that status changed?
The Telecommunication Act of 1996 allows for local jurisdictions to review these applications.
Based on what, though?
Because it's still a land use issue.
Mm-hmm.
And most cities, I believe, in the country have some form of review. Many of these applications, in the course of time, have been appealed, and they have gone to court.
What happens there?
Where the court believes that the reason for denial was based on health, statements made at the hearings, information submitted by applicants, or neighbors, people in the process, those tend to get struck down, and the cities are ordered either to redo the hearing, or to grant the appeal of the cell company.
Now, once the courts admonish us for having made decisions based on health, statements of health, then basically, what are we left with, being able to...
Then you're left with land use. And so the typical land use issues that might be brought up would be traffic. Once the facility is built, and because it's relatively small, it's a short construction process, a technician visits the site about every four to six weeks. The technician drives in a typical automobile, it's not a large truck with a crane, it's just a typical vehicle. The vehicle can park on-site. The technician is at the site for about 30 to 45 minutes, and then they leave and they come back.
So basically, in a tall building, you probably have inspection of an elevator. That elevator inspector is probably similar in what they come drive up in, and the kind of time they spend, or what have you, when it comes to interruption to the neighborhood, is about the same as an elevator inspector, right?
I would agree, correct.
Okay, so...
It doesn't emit noise, there's no light, there's no habitable floor area, there's no on-site employee, so it's very minimal impact from a land use point of view.
If the courts overturn a person to put what he wanted to put eventually, and then on top of that, maybe we, you, the taxpayers, may be footing the bill for his attorneys, and maybe more. Well, once I explain that to them, they didn't kind of like that idea, giving a developer some of their tax dollars on top of him, a court saying to the city, you still have to let this individual or this company do what they want to do in this neighborhood. The reason why I bring that point is because I've been in the Plum hearings, where in front of the public, Councilman Reyes has educated me to the fact that the federal government has basically stripped us down to a minuscule authority on these issues. And the bottom line is, all we're doing here is adhering to that fact, unfortunately. And we're still going to get yelled at by our constituents, we're still going to get constituents who are displeased with us. But the bottom line is, this is the right place for us to go, correct?
Yes. Councilman, let me also point out, this doesn't mean that there will never be an applicant in the future. If an applicant has a building that's less than 36 feet, or they want to build something that exceeds the envelope, they will go to the conditional use process that's already in the code, that will remain in the code. So this will not be the end of applications for the city of Los Angeles, or for the carriers.
And one, a few more seconds, Council President. I don't like voting for this, I prefer not to, but the reality is, it's the responsible thing to do, as much as our constituents want us to do something else. But I think for the conservation of the taxpayers' dollars, and also for the reality that we're not the end-all or be-all, and we don't have the authority that we'd like to have, the federal government has usurped that authority in this case, this is the right thing for us to do. Reluctantly, but it's the right thing for us to do.
Mr. Zine.
Well, I listen to all the discussion arguments, and I respect those views. My concern is, we try to tell our communities, we want to be transparent, we want you to get involved, we establish neighborhood councils, and we're close to them, and I get a lot of complaints from a neighborhood council on these particular issues. So I feel I would betray, be betraying not only the charter that brought about neighborhood councils, but the people who are in those neighborhood councils, who say they want to have a say in this. We're excluding them from the whole process, we're saying, this is going to be the rule in Los Angeles, and push it all aside. And I can't support something like that, when we try to bring them into focus, and then we exclude them. And there may be that 10% that's an issue. I understand we want to expedite through the process, but at the same time, we have an obligation for the people of Los Angeles who live and pay taxes here, to do as they believe, and they want to have their input, and I think we're neglecting them in this process. So I'm going to join my colleague, Mr. Rosendahl, and not support this.
Thank you. We did, in the process of vetting the ordinance, notify all of the neighborhood councils on two occasions, and I believe the only response we got was from two of the 85 neighborhood councils. West Valley, I'm not sure the names of the two, but probably in your district or close to it, correct?
Mr. Rosendahl.
We sent them a hearing notice.
Madam President, I appreciated the dialogue among my colleagues on this issue. I learned a lot from my colleagues about what the city's powers are, and what the city's powers aren't. But I want to tell you something. Washington DC and the lobbyist infestation there is so horrific, that we don't have health care for our people, because the drug companies and the insurance companies control the process. This law in 1996, that was put in process by the cable industry, by a whole lot of telecommunications people, I know, I was part of the executive part of that communications industry, usurped local people's involvement and concerns. How dare the federal government take health issues back to Washington and say we can do nothing about it? I am outraged by this, and we need to send a symbol back to Washington DC. Just because you had the votes, and you had the corrupt process back there, that has made it a law that we can't even talk about health issues, when we are where the rubber hits the road. It is our communities, we see these people every day. And when they come up to me and they say, "Mr. Rosendahl, do you have any sensing about the health issues?", I'm not going to throw my hands up and say, "Oh, it's Washington", just like the Iraqi war, just like no health care, just like deficit spending, just like everything else. So we in the city of Los Angeles should rise up for our people, and say the health issue is of concern, and take it back through the process, and see if we can get the federal government to focus on this law and change it. That's why I'm voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Reyes.
I truly appreciate everything that's been said about why we shouldn't vote for this. But we must ask ourselves, are we going to send our planners to go down that process, to take up more of their time, to go through the judicial process, to end up being told we have no jurisdiction? Our energies, if this is how we truly feel, should be working with our congress members, working with the National League of Cities, work with the California League of Cities, do the appropriate motions, the appropriate channels of communication with our lobbyists in DC, because we have lobbyists here in Los Angeles, in DC, in Sacramento, put together a resolution, and raise that issue within that arena, we can be effective. So if Councilman Zine, Councilman Rosendahl, we can do that. We're not helpless. But let's be aware of the opportunity cost we're paying when we have planners who are doing three or four jobs with one individual, when we fail to hear their suggestions on how we streamline and make us more effective, that hurts our communities as well. And so it is a question of how we spend our time. And I will join you, Councilmember Zine, Councilman Rosendahl, in the issues you raised, because I believe in what you're saying. But when we drill down to the mechanics of the process, as mundane and as bureaucratic it sounds, I believe the planning department came up with an approach and a solution that saves us money, makes them more accountable for their time, and allows us to move the casework in such a way where we can be more efficient as a legislative body. But let's not let go of the points being raised. Let's challenge the National League of Cities, let's challenge the California League of Cities, let's put these motions before the feds, let's go after congress, let's go after our senators, our senate representatives, and raise this issue, if that is what we're going to do, and if we're going to put ourselves in a place to be effective in that process. So I just want to thank you for your support, and I'm hoping we can see the reasons why we're trying to approach it this way, for the sake of efficiencies. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Labange, and Mr. Zine.
To the Plum chairman, Councilman Reyes, one thing that I need to add to what you just said, I don't want anybody to think that this motion is something about us setting something aside and not having to deal with something. I think this motion has more to do with not fooling the public into thinking that we have authority that we don't have. Because when these issues come to the Plum committee, we see it in the people's eyes, they come to the podium, they ask us to stop them, et cetera, but the color of authority that we have doesn't allow us to do that. And then what happens is, we end up, if we're being responsible, we have to go ahead and vote to allow them to have these facilities. But if we want to be irresponsible and lie to them, we can go ahead and vote no, and then the Plum committee passes it to the council, and we can vote no on council. But the bottom line is, all it's going to do is send it over to the courts, and sooner or later, they're going to get what they want, at a major expense to the taxpayers, at a major expense to everybody involved. And the bottom line is, we don't have that authority. So with all due respect, I think this is in line with what Dennis Zine was talking about, about including our communities. But more importantly, let's add a word to that, let's be honest with them. Let's be honest with them, and remind them that there are certain things that our city government is stripped of being able to do. And when it comes to these antennas, because of what the courts have done, and because what the federal government has done, we have been stripped of the authority that we had, that may have been ambiguous 10 years ago, and we actually took action and denied certain... certain antennas to go up, but the bottom line is, roll the clock forward today, we don't have that authority anymore. So if somebody comes and recounts you, "I remember in nineteen ninety-five, we were able to stop that same antenna," well, it's not going to happen today, because now the courts have opined, and now the jurisdiction that we had is no longer here. So I want to insert a word in this debate, and that is, that let's be honest with the people of Los Angeles and remind them that the federal government and the courts have stripped us of the pleasure that we give them when we deny an antenna, and now we don't have that authority. That's what this ordinance is about. It's about being honest with our constituents, not allowing them to think something that is not true, not encouraging them to go ahead and get up in arms about something and they're talking to the wrong people. They should be talking to their congressmen, they should be talking to the courts, they should be petitioning, maybe put something on the ballot, something like that. But to come to our committees, to come to this council and ask us to do something that we have no legal authority to do, that's what this ordinance is about. It's about that, it's about being honest. It's about just being honest with them and letting them know, you know what, we're going to do the right thing when we can do the right thing. We're going to debate it, we're going to have honest votes about it, but when it comes to these issues, we've been stripped of it. If you've sat in that Plum Committee like Jack Weiss has, like I have, like Ed Reyes has, you would have, it would have been drilled into you, reluctantly, I've now had to accept that.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Garcetti will go next, he has the first time on the queue.
Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't going to say anything about this, but I do feel a little bit compelled to stand up, and I respect that some of my colleagues may have a different opinion about this, but I do think, I stand up here for having better cellphone coverage than what we have in the City of Los Angeles right now, and one of the big impediments has been, I think, the way that we have been able to zone out a network that almost every other city in the world that I've been to does a better job of. I've looked at a lot of the medical evidence too, from folks that are neutral, who aren't from the telephone companies and who aren't from advocacy groups against this, and I'm convinced that our televisions are much more dangerous to us in terms of amounts of radiation in our own homes than cellphone towers are, for one. And for, two, I think that if we look at this from an emergency perspective, cellphones are now essentially the call boxes of, of this century. In fact, you see call boxes not even being replaced on the freeways now because so many people have cellphones. And in emergencies and in extreme situations, we still have places which people are unsafe in this city because we have not figured out a way to be better about putting these antennas up. I feel very safe about that. I would say that in my own neighborhood. I live in a canyon myself, which is, I know, one of the places where people sometimes claim that the radiation just bounces back and forth and increases, that's not quite how radiation works, but I understand that's how it's often portrayed. And I think that for all of us, whether it's parts of the freeway, we know in certain carriers, you're between Crenshaw and Vermont on the ten freeway and you can't get a signal, if that's where your car breaks down, you're out of luck if there's not a call box working. If you're in certain parts of my, my district where there are a lot of places that you can't get cellphone coverage and, and you have an emergency situation either with your health or with other public safety, I think it's time that we do something about that. So I would encourage folks to, to, to support this, I would appreciate that it's not just, it's easy also to say, "Oh, it's out of our hands," and then we don't have to actually say where we are, which, so it would have been easy for me to sit down, but I did feel compelled to stand up and say that and to, I'd be happy to share some of the medical and, and scientific information that I've looked at, that's out there, that I think is, is really there, but it's important for us as leaders to rely on that as much as we can and to make sure that our city is as wired, even though this is wireless, as other great cities around the world, our, our economic growth and our safety depends on it.
Mr. Labonde.
Just a technical question. Second and Western, commercial building, this exempts the, any kind of process for a hearing on a building at Second and Western, is that correct?
If the building, Councilman, is at least thirty-six feet in height and the antennas are on the roof, not on the side of the building, not in the parking lot, they're painted, they're first that they're enclosed in a box, essentially a large box.
Like, like how it covers an air conditioning duct?
Or stairwell that exits on the roof. It might be a stucco appearance, it could be a smoked glass appearance, whatever.
But at Second and Western, thirty feet away is the back lot line of where people's backyard is, so if that's a residential zone, how does it play on that?
All those people would see, if they can see anything, would be a box on the roof, the same color and texture as the walls of that building. If it was a one-story mini mall, the building would be too short, they couldn't utilize this ordinance, they'd have to go through a public hearing.
So what happens if someone was just denied by your department like the last three months on an issue like this, and that they'll probably come and reapply again?
If the law changes, just as it did, and, and some of our jurisdiction was reduced, if the law changes, somebody, if they comply with this, could go to the building department. But I'm not sure what size the building is at Second and Western, I've driven the street, but I, I don't know the building.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Labonde. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I know that we've been discussing this for a long time. Asbestos, lead in paint, health hazards, we know that, well, asbestos used to be very popular, now it causes cancer. We know that lead used to be in paint, we know that that causes health standards. I know that Mr. Rosendahl is concerned about the health standards, I'm concerned about those health standards. I'm also concerned about that group of people, and you say the West Valley complained about it, they've complained about it to me, to give them an option. And while the federal government has their rules and their restrictions and they keep stripping us of our authority to do things, I still think that we should have something plugged in, and I would be satisfied supporting this, if we could have something plugged in to have an appeal, and we're removing that appeal. That's my concern, is that we don't have an appeal process. The ninety percent that are fine, no one has an issue with, I still think there's health hazards. We talk about brain cancer with cellphones, we don't have all the research on it. We may find out down the road, just like asbestos and lead paint, that cellphones are hazards to our health. I know there are hazards when you're driving down the road, yet we don't have laws in this state restricting them in a car at this time, other states do. So we need to take this step at a, step at a time. What troubles me is we're not given an option, and if those eighty-five council districts, neighborhood councils didn't support or respond, but some did, my concern is for those people, we have an obligation, since we brought them in the focus, if there's an appeal, but now we're giving no appeal, we're saying, blanket, "Do you have the authority? Thank you very much." And we talk about the slippery slope. This is only the beginning. I think what will happen is there'll be more of the, by right, and we'll find more of it, and we'll just concede. And I understand your department's overloaded, and I want to help with that and streamline that. I don't think we need to waste time on those issues that aren't a problem, but the health issue is an issue that I'm concerned, but more concerned about lack of an appeal. And because of that lack of appeal, for those people who want to have their voices heard, I can't support it with that. I don't know if we can plug it in, I don't know if it's, if it's possible, Mr. Reyes, if we could have that in, and not to have them all, since ninety percent go through without an appeal, but to give the neighborhood councils and those homeowner groups, which we have a lot of interest in this area of these towers, in my district, and maybe other areas would have it too.
I believe just from a process point of view, if there's a proposal that is creating that type of environment and stress in your community and the work you're doing, I believe you have the ability to two-forty-five a decision, we can bring this out, you can make a motion to bring this forward, we, we have that discretion, it's not that we're helpless. If there's going to be a controversial project that includes an antenna, it is our obligation to pay attention to it and respond to it. And you have that mechanism. What this is trying to do is trying to be more efficient with a limited planning staff, our city attorneys, on cases we're going to lose anyway, because we continue to appeal, and the court says, "Too bad, we're sorry, this is out of your jurisdiction."
Right.
And, and that is precious time and precious resources that we can't afford, and, and that was the spirit of this intent.
And I don't dispute that, I have no argument with that at all. My issue, again, goes back to that process of some, some appeal process. Thank you.
Just to clarify, because I'm, I'm also interested as well on the appeal process, can we two-forty-five these items? There's no, is there a commission decision or some decision that allows us to two-forty-five it?
My understanding is building permits are appealable, where somebody would argue or allege that the permit was issued improperly. And that matter is appealable to the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners and further appealable to a zoning administrator.
The question I would have is, do the neighborhood councils get notified of every building permit? Are they notified when these antennas are going to be installed? Are they even made aware of it?
I can't speak for the building department, I don't know if all building permits are brought to their attention.
See, that's the problem, if they don't know about it, then there's no recourse for them.
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Green, could we add a, an element where it's required that every antenna being applied for, that the council office be notified, so that way we are aware of these permits? Can we have that queued into the actual application, just so that every council member here has a confidence of knowing that we know what's going to go on in our own district, and if there's going to be a rash of antennas coming forward, we'll be made aware of it and act accordingly?
There's an early notification system that was established following the establishment of the neighborhood council system. In every two weeks, a complete list of all discretionary actions that come to our department are electronically transmitted to all of those neighborhood councils and your council offices. The building department also has a, a report, and I can't tell you the details, I don't work for the building department, about building activity in each council district, or it can be aggregated that way.
Well, just for the sake of clarity, if I can do a friendly amendment to this motion and direct the department to notify every council office of every antenna being applied for, whether by right or not, so that way we know when they're coming forward, and we'll know what is by right and what is being proposed under a set of exemptions and/or variances, so we could be ahead of the curve and not get whipped by our bosses that we let this go. Yes, but we can notify the council office, we can direct...
If I hear you correctly, Councilman, perhaps what you're suggesting is a clause that would be inserted in the appropriate location that would say, "Prior to the issuance of any building permit for one of these uses, the building department shall notify..."
Yes.
Could we extend that also to the appropriate neighborhood council for that particular community? And that way, they're put on notice. If they want to appeal, it's fine, if they don't, if they want to bring it to us to two-forty, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware, since we want to be open with it.
I think we should own up to our responsibilities, if we're being notified, then we should be notifying all the appropriate stakeholders, and let that be our discretion. I'd suggest that we just notify the departments at this time, and, and then each council office work with their neighborhood councils the way they, they have, because everyone has their own way of approaching that issue.
Well, I know that with the six communities I represent, very active neighborhood councils, and my staff deals with them, I've got three representatives for six communities, it would be a lot more efficient, at least in the third district, if that notification that went to us also went to the appropriate, not every neighborhood council in the city, but only the ones to be affected, and if they want it, then we can two-forty-five it. I just want to make sure we have an option for them, and if Mr. Reyes is correct, we could two-forty-five it, then I would be able to go online with it, if we have the opportunity to do that.
And I stand corrected, we can only two-forty-five commission actions, not a building permit, so we would have to come in with a motion to contest any permits that we are processing, so would not be a two-forty-five.
Well, if, just, I'm sorry, Mr. Reyes, and I think what you were saying earlier is, if a building, a building permit is appealable to the department, if it is appealed to the department, the commission has to take that issue up, correct?
Correct.
So then the commission's decision would then be able to be two-forty-fived. Is that correct?
So, if I can get this clarification, so the building permit is issued for the site, and the neighborhood council wishes to appeal it because they'll be notified, they can then appeal that under this rule that we're putting into place, so there will be an appeal process, what I'm hearing?
Yes, Councilman.
Well, that was what I wanted to accomplish in the first place. So, one more time, a company wants to put up an antenna, notification goes out to the council office, neighborhood council decides they want to appeal it, they appeal to building...
Building and Safety Board of Commissioners.
And then they hear the case, and then if we don't agree with that, we can two-forty-five that particular decision here.
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Attorney?
If, if this is changing the ordinance, and it would be a substantial change, and council really cannot act on that right now.
Could we do an amendment to it?
If you have an amendment to it, it will be a new ordinance coming in, and when the new ordinance comes in, it will be first reading at that time.
Mr. Reyes? I think we can accomplish at least my concerns on this.
I'm trying to make sure that everyone is comfortable with the process. If you want that element of, to be able to appeal, then let's add that, I'm assuming by being notified upfront, you have that one guard, if you will, and what I'm hearing is that we can appeal if it is appealed by another body once the permit is issued, correct? Or once they apply for that permit?
Yes, I think what you're trying to do is get a, a plan checker in the building department to hold off on issuing any permits until each respective council office has had an opportunity to review it or to be aware of it, at least, and to poll whoever you would feel is appropriate to be polled, and if you feel that there was an abuse in the issuance of the permit, then somebody could appeal that to the Building and Safety Commission.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Reyes, another option would be to adopt the ordinance as written now, and then have an amendment come back through Plum regarding the notification procedures that you're discussing.
Why can't we have that to the second reading?
We can't do this simultaneously, can we just amend what's on the floor now?
Right, yes, if, Mr. Attorney, if they make an amendment today and the ordinance is redrafted to include that, the ordinance would then come back to the council, we would hope, within a week, that would, can be considered the first reading, and then it would come back the following week for the second reading if we don't have twelve members present, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's, that's the friendly amendment I'm trying to put on the floor.
So I think there's concern about adopting an ordinance and having to amend it later, yes?
Exactly. So, again, friendly amendment, so that we can add those safeguards, if you will, where each council office is notified...
No.
Not on a building permit?
No, not the building.
Yeah, Councilman, it happens, I think the question that's been raised on this side of the horseshoe is that the council office wouldn't otherwise know that a permit was pending.
Right.
So how would they know when they could appeal the issuance of the permit?
We don't know.
It goes simply to the building department, under this ordinance, like other administrative functions.
That's why I'm trying to assert this amendment, that we are given the red flag that there's an application in your district for an antenna, regardless of location, and then we can respond to that red flag.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and colleagues, we've, we've been free-flowing here, which is a good thing, but if we could ask you now to, please push a button if you want to ask another question, but I think, Mr. Zine, your, your button is still pushed, are you...
And just one technical question for the city attorney, this is going to be by right, according to the ordinance, will we still have the opportunity, under the rules, to bring in an appeal if it's a by right and the community is concerned about that location, if it's by right to have it there, and that's the issue that they want to appeal?
I think Mr. Green could have...
I believe, Councilman, what you're asking is, on the one hand, the use would be permitted by right, but a building permit has, it runs a parallel track, the use is permitted by right, a hardware store is permitted on Lancashire Boulevard, for example, the issuance of the permit may be contested.
Okay, so they would have the right to go through the appeal, to do as they wish for the particular community?
Yes, I believe so, I would probably...
But we need to, we need to make sure that that part is confirmed, and that's why, I know it's, and I understand all the discussion on it, I just want to make sure that those folks that want to appeal, for whatever reason, have that opportunity and we're living up to our transparency in government to the communities.
If I could only add one piece of advice, that would be to make sure that the building department, which then has to administer the notification, has been consulted on this in case we're missing something, I don't mean to speak for them, it's a different...
I think what we're, we're going to do today is actually continue this, give direction for the ordinance to be amended as instructed by Mr. Reyes, have that ordinance come back to us within a week, Mr. Reyes?
Yes, sir.
And in that time, you could consult with the Building and Safety Department.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, Madam Clerk?
So then the action would be to continue this for one week, which would be, excuse me, October twenty-sixth, and in the meantime, consult with the Building and Safety Department and make sure all the... make sure all the instructions that Mr. Reyes recommended are included in the new ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. So that, there's no vote on this item today, colleagues, it will be coming back to us in a week, being redrafted by the Planning Department and the City Attorney's Office. Next item of business.
Uh, next items are 83 and 84, and those were both called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two reward motions, would like to emphasize the information to the general public to assist 77th detectives in locating the suspects involved in these two recent homicides. First one, September 1st, Johnny Stringer, 17, was fatally wounded at 10021 South Harvard Boulevard. After an exhaustive search, LAPD detectives didn't, have not identified the suspects. They're asking for any information that would bring this case to a conclusion, and we're asking that anyone in the public that has such information, that we have a $50,000 reward, and the detective is Teddy Hammonds at 77th homicide at 213-485-1383. On item 84, we have a, another homicide victim, Kenneth Dion Robinson, 27, was fatally wounded while standing in front of 1344 West 51st Street by an unknown group of suspects. Also, this case has not been able to be brought to a successful conclusion, and we ask the public for any information to be directed to Detective Jay Ratkey, 77th, at 213-485-1383, and that's also a $50,000 reward. We asked a unanimous vote on those two items.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Colleagues, those items are now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next item of business.
Uh, next item is, well, Councilmember Zine called 86 through 92 special, and I'm not sure if he wishes to take them individually or all together.
Just bring them all up.
Department, you may come up to the center seats.
We can bring you all up, please. I also want to introduce Assemblymember Lloyd Levine, who's here in chambers with us, from our San Fernando Valley, State Assemblyman Lloyd Levine. Get him on camera, he's over there between, there we go. Are you on camera yet? Can we get the Assemblyman on camera? He's over there next to Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Gardinas. Lloyd, stay there so they can, I'll see you at home, hold a second. There we go, okay. He's the tall handsome man. Next to that short guy. Okay, the reason why we continue this from yesterday to today, none of these came to committee, they were requests for exemptions to various positions within the city of Los Angeles, and we started it yesterday, and I think my staff and the Personnel Department, the other departments here represented, have reviewed the situation. As we heard yesterday from Councilmember Reyes, they want to have a feedback from the one position for the Planning Department, and what I want to make sure is, when we do these in committee, which is normally done, is we put conditions, restrictions, amendments, et cetera, and I want to make sure that we all had an opportunity, since, again, this didn't go to committee, that we'd have our say, whether it be Wrexton Parks, that Mr. Labonge is concerned about, or some of the other positions that we have listed from number 86 to 92. So, Madam Clerk, we just do these one time? Do we have to call them one by one?
You can do them all together if you wish, it's, it's up to council.
If you just want to go through the list, then, and then we'll go through them?
So we're starting with item, uh, number 80...
Item number 86, I'm sorry, is approval of a, a project coordinator for Department of Neighborhood Empowerment.
And 87?
87 is City Planning Principal City Planner, and that's the Historic Preservation Manager. 88 is Wreckon Parks AGM. 89 is the Director of Airport Safety Services for Lawa. 90 is Human Relations Commission Project Coordinator. 91 is Wreckon Parks Golf Manager, and 92 is Commissioner of Status of Women, Senior Project Coordinator.
Okay, thank you. If you go ahead and begin on the first one?
Well, I just, I just wanted to clarify real quick. I, I understand that there was some confusion yesterday in terms of the Personnel Department's role in the whole exemption process, and I just wanted to clarify for the council, that the Personnel Department does not have any authority to approve or disapprove exemptions under Charter Section 1001B. The Charter gives the mayor the authority to recommend the approval of the exemption requests, and the council has the authority to disapprove those requests. Recently, the mayor's office has asked the Personnel Department to provide some additional information to them on these exemption requests. The areas in which we were asked to provide information are as follows. Does the exemption request meet the criteria set forth in Charter Section 1001B? Are the duties and responsibilities to be performed appropriate for the class? Has the position been previously exempted? Does the Personnel Department examine for the class, and what is the current number of exemptions under Charter Section 1001B? As Councilmember Zine had indicated earlier, typically, these types of requests go through the Personnel Committee, and at that point, the Requesting Department goes before the Personnel Committee and is there to respond to any questions that the committee may have regarding the exemption request. I have Mr. Nelson here today regarding his request to have the project coordinator for his department, so if there's any specific questions from Mr. Nelson, he is here.
Let me go, if I can, from 86 to 92, do all the departments have sufficient funding for all these positions? Each and every department that we're asking?
Certainly we do.
Okay, and...
I'm hearing a lot of other "we-dos" behind me.
The, pardon?
I'm hearing a lot of other "we-dos" behind me.
Okay, well, we just want, because these were all, I understand, approved in the current budget, and then the question is, if they were approved in the budget, which took effect July 1st, this is now almost end of October, what's been the delay in putting these positions forward? Or were they put forward?
Hiring freeze largely was, was the delay.
The hiring freeze came off...
And then there was the change in the mayoral administration, because the recommendation to the city council must be initiated by the mayor, and I know that in our case, and in a few other cases, the vacancies occurred during the Hawn administration, and as Tim McOscar explained to me, he wanted to not make that decision during their period between the election and the inauguration, they wanted to leave that decision for the new mayor, so that created some delays also.
Okay, so these were all budgeted in the current budget, 5, 6, and the requests were put in a timely manner, and somehow, due to the election process, were delayed?
Well, I certainly know that's the case in our situation.
Okay.
The other departments, I'm not totally clear on.
And the position that you're requesting is for a project coordinator, can you just briefly explain what they're going to do?
Yes, the project coordinator who held this position got promoted after someone above him left to join the, the nonprofit sector. So this person would join the ranks of what we call our advocates, those are the ones who have a portfolio of like 11 or 12 neighborhood councils that they assist in their day-to-day needs.
So this is filling the current position?
Yes, so it's been previously exempted.
Not, not making a new position, but one that's currently vacant?
I wouldn't even dream of anything new right now.
I know you wouldn't think of that. Okay, if, Madam Chair? Madam Chair? If, if there's no other questions, then I would recommend approval on 86.
On 86, that item's now before us, colleagues. We're going to, the other items you still want to hear, comments on, correct?
Yeah.
Item 86, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Next item.
Thank you. We have more to come.
Next item is 87, and that's City Planning Principal City Planner.
And we heard about this one yesterday, and concerned voiced by Mr. Reyes, is that that matter be returned to the Plum Committee, I believe it was six months, for a review? Is that correct?
That would be for the department to respond to.
It wasn't the matter that, that this particular individual report to Plum Committee within the six-month period, not the matter.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is the, the person who gets this position, I just want to make sure that we've got that clarified on the record. You're with the Planning Department?
No, I'm not, I'm with the, no.
We do not have anyone here from the Planning Department.
I, I remember they spoke yesterday, and that, Mr. Reyes, on this issue regarding the Historic Preservation Manager, I want to make sure that the conditions that you discussed yesterday are included in the position.
Thank you, sir, and I want to just state that we move that upon selection of the Principal City Planner, the Department of City Planning reports to Plum Committee on the status of the Office of Historic Resources' staffing and work program priorities, again, is to understand how this resource is being moved and how we address those concerns. That, that would be the, the movement.
And the Planning Department has funds for this position?
Uh, the position, I, I can't speak for the Planning Department, I'm with the Personnel Department, but the position was authorized by council in March of 2005, specifically to provide a Historic Preservation Manager.
Okay. Out of their budget at...
I don't know what the funding was for that, the department...
I, I believe there's sufficient funding for them to go ahead and fill the position.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, are you satisfied with that?
Okay, so we now have item 87.
87.
Colleagues, open, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
That item's been approved.
Thank you, 88 now.
We can send all these items forthwith, is that correct, Mr.?
Yes.
88 is Wreckon Parks Assistant General Manager.
And again, the, the first question is, this was put in the budget, it's in your budget for funding?
Yes, it is a general-funded position. I'm Harold Fajita, Director of Human Resources for the department, and to my right is Assistant Director Deborah Maldonado.
If you can briefly explain what this position will do, the Assistant General Manager?
Yes, our department is divided into five geographic regions. We have the Valley region, the West region, the Griffith region, the Metro region, and the Pacific region, and we have two Assistant General Managers that oversee these five regions. Each of the regions is headed up administratively by a superintendent, and the Valley region and the West region are overseen by the AGM for Operations West. The Griffith region, the Metro region, and the Pacific region are overseen by the AGM for Operations East, and that is the position before you this afternoon. We are requesting to fill this position on a civil service exempt basis, and are looking for your, your approval.
And the question is, why exempt this position, why not fill it with a civil service promotional process?
All of our positions at this point have been filled in the past through, so, through the exempt process. The General Manager feels strongly that for purposes of holding the AGMs fully accountable, that he is better served having AGMs in exempt positions rather than in civil service positions.
And that person will be then accountable to the General Manager, and not, basically not will employ?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, if there's no other questions?
80, 88, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you.
Next item is 89, and that's Director of Airport Safety Services for Lawa.
There's been a request if we could go to item number 92...
That's fine.
Before that, okay?
92?
92.
And that's Commission on the Status of Women, Senior Project Coordinator.
Good afternoon. Tell everyone who you are.
Paula Petrotto, with the Commission on Status of Women.
And Paula, on this position, it's a new position, not been previously exempted, and it deals, it has not been previously exempted, it's a new position...
Yes, it is.
...within the commission.
Right.
And can you just briefly explain what it's going to deal with? I know it's a very sensitive, important issue.
Right, this is actually probably the only position of its like in, in the country, and this position will be looking at the issue of human trafficking. It will be, you know, developing policies, working with high-level officials within the FBI, ICE, Police Department, and the like. This position was created, as you know, by motion, it was funded in September, it was nine-month funding, and it will be very unique in that it would be working with about 100 coalition members in the community, on developing resources for victims, doing outreach programs to the community on how to recognize, identify human trafficking victims. So it is very unique to the city and very unique to the country, my understanding is.
And is it going to be funded general fund, or are there any grants?
It's general fund. Of course, we are always seeking, and, and in discussions right now with the federal government, on how to fund this and even expand this unit within the commission.
Okay, so there will be a close tie with law enforcement in this group...
Absolutely.
...which would lend to the exemption for a special individual who'd have that ability to deal with that arena?
To maneuver, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and that item is now before us, this is item 92. Councilmembers, uh, Councilmember Labonge, did you want to comment on this?
As I support this here, in the discussion, though, in the past, we had a consolidation, we did do consolidation. What kind of collaboration has taken place since we haven't done consolidation?
Collaboration in terms with, with...
With the human services arm of city government, there was a talk of creating some human services arm and, and moving it into one to consolidate and save money, but they said we don't want to do that.
Right.
But we're going to collaborate more. I just thought you were here for this position.
Right.
What other collaborations have you done with other commissions, et cetera?
Well, this, particularly the human trafficking issue, of course, we're in collaboration with LAPD, we'll be doing some training with LAFD, Human Relations Sat on this commission, Children Youth, we're also working with Department of Neighborhoods, because they're going to be very key in getting the word out to our citizenry about human trafficking and what's happening in LA.
And what other issues?
The outreach issues, how to identify trafficking victims, we've had several cases...
I know, this is not on traffic, but what I'm just saying, I'm just taking the point, Paula, we, we did have a consolidation effort.
Right, mhm.
This is another exempt position, you need it, I support it.
Thank you.
But also, we did want to see collaboration. If we weren't going to consolidate, we want to see collaboration.
Right.
And I know I caught you, and I was just over there doing other business, but as I heard this here, I wanted to remind us about collaboration.
No, absolutely.
And you talked about trafficking, which is a very important issue...
Right.
...that you brought to our attention, and I'm sure there's 15 more that you could think off the top of your head, but I want to just preach collaboration, and I have, I'm glad you got this position.
Thank, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Mr. Zine, we were just going to vote on this, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Ready, okay. Item number two, colleagues.
92.
92, sorry, excuse me, 92. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item has been approved. We'll go back to...
89?
89.
Anybody here from the airport?
There's no one here from the airports.
I think...
I know they spoke, uh...
Yeah, they spoke yesterday.
Briefly.
Very important.
Well, I understand very important, but I think they had like three minutes to say something. Do you remember what they mentioned?
No, I, I think they were just basically going over what the job is going to be responsible for.
It's going to be a Director of Airport Safety, which will direct law enforcement at Lawa, Ontario, Van Nuys, and Palmdale Regional Airports, and a new position within the Department of Airports, directly under the Airport General Manager.
That's correct.
Between the Airport General Manager and the Chief of the LAX facility, but basically, maybe you would refer to them as a Super Chief, that would have umbrella responsibility over all the other airports.
Correct.
And looking at the, I'm sure they have budgeted for that...
Correct.
...without any reservations on that, and the ability to work with other agencies in law enforcement role would, I'm sure, cause an exemption because of the unique position that that person would hold.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge, did you want to add anything, or we'll...
No, I just want to support the efforts at the Los Angeles Center.
That's why you're going to vote, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, that item is now before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate... Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item's approved. Next item.
Next item is item number ninety, and that is the Human Relations Commission Project Coordinator.
On this particular matter, this was an exempt position. And the question is, what happened after that? Was it removed from the budget, and was it put back in the budget?
This is a backfill.
If you can identify who you are.
We have the funding for it.
No, can you identify who you are? Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I am Frances Sears with the Human Relations Commission. This was a exempt position that we have approved, and it's a backfill for a position, we lost the person.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Thank you, it's kind of hard to hear.
This is a backfill for, the person who was in the position is now working with the Fire Department in terms of human relation awareness training and hostile work environment training. So because she has gone, we are backfilling her position, and this is the exemption that we need.
And is the Fire Department giving partial funding or full funding for that?
Yes, they have, yes, yes.
So the funding is there?
For the person that left, not the-
Right, right, right.
Yes, they are.
So this would be under the current budget of Human Relations?
Our current Human Relations Commission budget, yes.
And I know the importance of why we had to transfer that person over because of the problems that were occurring in that particular department. Okay, I did receive an email from Rabbi Freling that he was having eye surgery. He wished to be here, but due to that, he's not here, so I wanted to mention that.
Okay.
I did get his email.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. You notice, colleagues, that was ten ayes because we only have ten people here. So the guards will be protecting the doors to make sure no one leaves, we can keep our quorum. Next item.
Item number ninety-nine is Wreckin Parks Golf Manager Position.
This is another exemption that was exempt in the past, exempted on two previous occasions, in 2002. And the question is, what happened to that position? Was it removed from the budget, has it been put back in? And is there funding for it? If you can identify and comment on that, please.
The funding source for this position has always consistently been the golf surcharge. So it is not funded by the general fund or Account 1010. It is a special funded position. And that is what it has always been. We've not deviated in any time since this position was created in this class from that.
And it was exempt two previous occasions? Did the people leave, was it cut, or what happened with it?
The first golf manager that we had sadly died on the job. And he then was replaced by another golf manager who recently resigned. And so we have this vacancy now as a result of a resignation.
Okay, and when was this item put in for an exempt position? How long ago?
Well, we did initially request it of the mayor's office under the prior administration. But then knowing that there was a new mayor, starting on July, we sent in a second request directed to the new mayor.
So it died-
Early July.
So it died under the previous administration? Got lost?
It never got completely processed under the old administration.
And that's why we've had that gap in time?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, it's paid for by a surcharge on the golf fees, which is more than substantial to cover the position?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair?
That item's now before us. Colleagues, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved.
Thank you.
Anymore, Mr. Zine?
No, and I hope in the future, we get these to the committee so we don't have to belabor this before the full council. As you know from Personnel Committee, that's what we do these normally.
And very good questions that you've asked today. So thank you, Mr. Zine, thank you to the departments. Move those items forward. Madam Clerk, and next item.
Madam President, do we should clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, let's clear the desk before-
Council has motions for posting and referral.
It's been moved and referred.
Council has excuses on the desk. Councilmember Smith requests to be excused November 29th and 30th and December 1st. Those are all for city business, and they meet council policy.
The council member's been excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused November 8th and 9th and November 16th. And those are for city business, they meet council policy.
Councilmember Hahn is excused.
Council President Padilla requests to be excused Friday, November 18th. For city business, a motion is required.
Mr. Labonge moves, Mr. Garcetti seconds.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Parks, you want to make an announcement before we go into closed session?
No, I'd like to have item 10, 12, eighty-three, and eighty-four forthwith.
For you, Mr. Parks, those will go forthwith.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
In conformity with California law, council is now authorized to go into closed session.
Thank you, and colleagues, remember, we have ten members present. So this should be quick, as soon as we clear the room.
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, colleagues, that's the end of our agenda today. Do we have any announcements? Announcements?
Hold on one second, hold on one second. Yeah, I just wanted to announce that the ITA Committee will meet at 1:30.
Other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
Yes, just like to announce to the public that Friday, October 21st, 7:00 PM, Crenshaw and Darcy will be playing their homecoming game at Crenshaw High School.
Okay, other announcements? If there's no other announcements, I just want to take a moment to thank all of you again for your support. As we demonstrated last Friday for the Children's Museum that broke ground yesterday, Councilmember Cardenas was able to join me at the groundbreaking event. Councilmembers Parks and Gruel joined us last night for a reception celebrating the milestone. And it was truly a special day. Want to reiterate our appreciation on behalf of the museum board for the city family, beyond just the council, but the City Attorney's Office, Peter Cheveria especially, Recreation and Parks, and Bureau of Engineering in Public Works. Neil Drucker in particular was a tremendous help for us along the way. And we hope to open doors in about a year and a half. Please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Labonge?
In memory of Mark Agiri, who was 21 years old tragically shot down at a party in the San Fernando Valley. Someone who went to the party was dismissed from the party, the person came back. He is survived by his dad, Joe Agiri, who was a great principal at one of our elementary schools in San Fernando Valley, and his mother Gina, and his two other brothers. As we adjourned, Mark Agiri.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Perry and I have two adjourning motions, she's going to second these. First, C. Dolores Tucker, born Philadelphia, 10th of 11 children to her father Whitfield Northridge, a bohemian immigrant. She was briefly attempted at Temple University, later married William Tucker, a construction company owner, and later made, who later went into real estate. She was active in Philadelphia politics, involved in a series of voter registration drive, became the first African-American woman to sit in the city zoning board. In '55, she joined the NAACP for the next decade, participated in marches, demonstrations across the country with Martin Luther King. And in '71, Pennsylvania Governor Milton Shape named her Secretary of Commonwealth, a post equivalent to the Secretary of State. During her tenure, she was credited with streamlining voter registration, serving until 1977. In addition, she chaired the Black Caucus of the Democratic National Committee for 11 years. She's very active in party politics, founded the National Congress of Black Women in 1984. As head of the organization, she led the war, most recently on rap lyrics, after she overheard her niece playing a record which basically used foul language and ostracized women. She's appalled by this, these songs. She went forth and pushed for anti-violence in promoting issues such as scrutiny of this rap music. She began picketing stores, taking the battle to the corporate room. She bought 20 shares of Time Warner stock so she could be heard at the shareholders' meeting. As a result of her protest, Time Warner sold its 50% stake in a death row record company. She passed away on Wednesday, October 12th, in Philadelphia. Also, we'd like to adjourn in memory of Vivian Malone Jones, one of the two black students who sought enrollment in the University of Alabama in 1963. Most importantly, and we honored Constance Baker Motley last week as the first woman to serve as a federal court judge. Ms. Motley was the attorney for Mrs. Jones in her effort. She was enrolled in University of Alabama, which then was led by Governor George Wallace Stan that the school doors would be closed. Born and raised in Mobile, Alabama, she graduated from the University of Alabama with a degree in management, and went to work with the United States Department of Justice in Washington as a member of the Voter Education Project. Later, she moved to Atlanta and worked for Environmental Protection Agency, where she was Director of Civil Rights and Urban Affairs. She retired in 1996. In 2000, she returned to the university to give a commencement address. The school currently has a scholarship fund in her name. Her husband Mac Jones is a physician who died in 2004. She died at the age of 63 on October 11th. It was interesting, she died just two days, two weeks after the attorney who helped her get through school.
All members. Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.